All right, I'm gonna call everybody's attention. We're not gonna do an invocation today, but we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests for people that wish to speak under just public comment prior to us beginning? Seeing no one, I'll just bring it to Council's, uh, I'm kidding. Yes, Councilmember, sorry, man.
Can I just inquire, it appears that most of the public is here to speak and maybe comment and listen on the matter having to do with the vacancy on the city.
Well, we have both of them. So I'm just gonna take 25B first.
Right, 25B or D?
D.
Okay, um, look, I'm not sure if that's something that the council would wanna entertain, maybe flipping those, just because it's more extensive and just to be respectful of folks' time. I don't know if there's any appetite for maybe doing the vacancy issue 65C first.
I would prefer just to take them the way they're on the, uh, on the agenda. So let me open up on item 25D.
I mean, I'll second it.
Yeah, if that's a motion to second, that's what the public's here for.
All right, let's vote on that. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I'm a no. So we have three noes, three ayes, so if motion fails. So let's go on to 25D. Uh, this is, uh, approval and agreement to appoint Christine Ridge as city manager. And I have two speakers on that item. Carl, uh, Bernas, please come forward, and Mike and Michelle Martinez.
Mayor, you're gonna wear my name yet.
I will, one of these years.
One of these years. It's Carl Benninger, for those that didn't get that.
But your ends don't look like ends.
Well, it's kinda standing out there in the cold, right?
It looks like an A, you got two As.
I totally agree with you, my handwriting's terrible. Uh, but, thank you for letting me speak. First of all, Vince, I wanna express my deepest sympathy for passing of your mother law and I hope you got along with yours as well as I got along with mine. She was, at times, I swear, I got along with her, but my wife did, but we had great times, so I have my sympathy. But very surely, I just wanna say that I very much support Christine being our new city manager. I wish we could keep Steve there, but he's going on to other better things. But anyway, I just wanna say that the big thing that I hear about her from both folks in Anaheim and my friends down in Laguna Nigal where I worked, is that she serves the people. And if it's one thing we were lacking with especially Cavassos, and I get into the conversation, is that he really was being, was looking to be served rather than serving the people. And I heard that Christine is the other way around, and so we have my support in hiring her as city manager.
Thank you, Michelle Martinez, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to really quickly just articulate and Councilman Sarmiento, my sympathies to you and your family and of course, your lovely wife, Eva, for the loss. Just wanted to articulate, as you all know, I paid close attention when I was on this dais on agenda items and even off this dais, I still continue to pay close attention to every agenda and every report. And as I reviewed the report for the city management manager position, and I don't really care what way you all decide, that's a political decision, that's your decision to choose who you want. But what I will state is that I don't believe that you were being transparent in your process and articulating what her compensation is really going to be in the staff memo. It's disingenuous to not articulate exactly what she will be getting paid if you do decide to move forward. And so I'm disheartened that when you so choose to go with this person, why wouldn't you be transparent? And just say what she's going to get paid, her entire compensation, not just what she's gonna get paid in this fiscal year, but articulate for the public exactly what her total compensation is going to be. Our last previous city manager, we went through that process, Mr. Mayor, and you were certain to put that out there prior to that city manager as well, under Mr. Cavassos. We also were very transparent and articulated the total compensation package. Why didn't we do that here? It's disingenuous and I just hope that the members here on this council will recognize that and really tell the public what you're exactly going to be paying her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it to Council. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, to appoint Christine Ridge as the city manager effective May 1st, 2019, and with comment.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any comments, please go ahead.
I would like to give the opportunity to my colleagues if they wanted to do that before I, before I go.
Questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I have some questions with, uh, I just wasn't, um, is this, where is it? Is this the three-year that we're going with, right? So I know we had some issues with, uh, or I had some concerns with that was, uh, with the evergreen clause, and I just wanted to see if you could explain that to me, Mr. Mayor, just exactly what that, what that means.
Yes, I think it probably best coming from the city attorney. She negotiated that and I know it began in our committee at four years and then we compromised back at three years. So can you just talk to that, please, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, I wanna thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and for the benefit of the public. The council did use an ad hoc committee, as indicated in the staff report, that gave us negotiating parameters. Initially, the candidate, Ms. Ridge, asked for a four-year evergreen. We negotiated that to a three-year evergreen. The evergreen and the way this functions is, in a contract, you can have a specific term. So that means the contract's gonna last for a year, or two, or three, or four. The way the evergreen works is that the term of the contract is for an initial term of three years. So you do have a three-year termed contract. However, in the 11th month of the contract, if the city council does not give notice to Ms. Ridge that they're not going to renew it, the contract will automatically renew for another year. So in the 11th month of the contract, one more year will be added on. So you'll have a, another, like a brand-new three-year contract every 11 months.
And if you give notice?
And if you give notice at that 11th month, then there's only two years and one month remaining on the contract. So you will always have the opportunity to give notice, and when you give notice, there'll be two years and one month remaining. If you don't give notice, then it's evergreen, it's always a three-year contract.
More questions, um, no, right now, uh, Councilor Panellus has the floor, let me just.
That was the one question I had.
All right, um, may I go to others?
I think Vance then Juan, and then I wanna speak as well.
Yeah, and Ceci also indicated earlier she wanted to speak. Go ahead, Councilor Sarmiento.
Yeah, and let me begin by saying thank you to my colleagues and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, um, on Tuesday night's council meeting for moving this, um, this matter to today's special meeting, just for the benefit of all of us being together, because both of these decisions that we're gonna be taking up tonight are very important. So thank you for that, for that direction. To my colleagues who sent their well wishes and kind regards, I really appreciate those as well, so. And to staff, everybody's been very, um, you know, supportive in a difficult time. And we know that sometimes these decisions that we make here today sometimes pale, right? In the scope, in the scheme of things when you're dealing with some real life-threatening and life-changing moments. So thank you all for that. And, um, what, but what I did wanna talk about is, um, and disclose, for full disclosure, I had a good conversation with, um, with Ms. Ridge today and spoke with her because I hadn't had the opportunity since early on to speak with her on this, and I hadn't really had a chance to review some of the terms and provisions in the employment agreement. And what I tried to do is, um, and she was very cordial, and I think, you know, she, um, she's come, we've had the benefit, former councilwoman Martinez and Councilman Solorio and the mayor have had an opportunity to interview her when she came before us a couple of years ago for an appointment back then. And I think she did well, and I think she's got good experience, although it's kinda limited as a city manager. I think she only has a little over a year experience as a, uh, full-time city manager. I know she's been an assistant city manager in the city of Anaheim, but, um, you know, Laguna Nigal is much different than Anaheim, it's probably smaller than many of our wards. Um, but I think what I was trying to do was get a sense and analyze this really separating her and just looking at the terms and provisions of this, and I think it kinda speaks to, um, you know, what Councilman Penyalosa was talking about. I guess my questions more are for staff, and I appreciate the work that the ad hoc committee did in speaking with the candidate. But do we, are these evergreen contracts common in the county? I recall them being common, um, you know, for trash haulers, but that's the only time I've ever seen an evergreen. And the last evergreen I saw was when Dave Ream was here, and he was here with us for about 25 years. And I remember we vowed never to have an evergreen again, at least many of us, because what it does is it really binds you and it's kind of a shotgun marriage, because it obligates you to a specific relationship. And to separate is really tough on these evergreens, because I think, as you mentioned, Ms., Madam City Attorney, they just automatically renew. And I think that, you know, it undermines Ms. Ridge's talent and her CV and the help that she can bring in. You know, I think that it really makes it difficult for me, because on principle, I just, you know, have a tough time with evergreens. Because if you look at the total package, 290,000 is probably, so I have, I have a few questions. So I asked the first question on the evergreen. The second one is where does 290 fall in the, in the, um, you know, for all the city managers in the county? And I understand that the city manager in Anaheim, his salary is 293. Um, so, you know, this would be less than that. But we're also talking about, um, you know, some other benefits that, uh, that will accrue here, and that's the, this is the CalPERS, and this is like for classic employees, it's an additional 8% in addition to the 2.755. So we're talking about, um, salary and benefits when you include, you know, the vacation allowance, when you include, um, other allowances here. It looks like really the salary and benefits really are about 420,000, 430,000. Is that correct?
Okay, so do you want me to answer the evergreen first, or go on the money first?
You can take them in any order you want.
Okay, um, let me answer the evergreen first, just so that you understand. An evergreen clause is usually inserted into a contract when you want stability. You want some long-term certainty, actually not stability, I should say certainty. Um, and you often find them in service contracts where a contractor is investing a lot, like a trash contract, for example. They buy trucks, those trucks cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's the reason they ask for evergreen provisions, because they amortize the value of the equipment. So it does make sense, they'll have like a 20-year term and they'll do an evergreen. You will see an evergreen provision in service contracts such as these, professional services, when again, I use that word stability, uncertainty is in play. Um, I do wanna remind the council that you do have the opportunity to terminate the evergreen in that 11th month, or even sooner than the 11th month, because if you terminate the evergreen, then the term will run out. But you will always, no matter when you terminate it, at a minimum, have a two-year, one-month time remaining on the contract. Is it common? I think we did see many of these evergreen provisions in contracts in the 80s and 90s. I think, just honestly, they're a little less common these days, because I think some of the managers look more to the severance payments, but they're not uncommon. So you do, you do see them, you see them more based on the situation in the cities when the people are coming to look for the deal.
How many in the county, how many city managers in this county have evergreen contracts?
There would be 34 city managers in this county. Um, I did not look at all the city manager contracts before this evening. I did look at several contracts, including this candidate's current contract that does not have an evergreen in it. Um, I don't believe the city of Anaheim does. Um, as I mentioned, I think they're in places where you've seen managers there for a very, very long time. So where you see cities with more recent turnover. I could do a quick search for you.
So if we, let's, and just kinda walk us through. If, um, if we decided to, let's say, you know, we wanted to separate for whatever reason, to buy out that contract, what's the cost and the value for that? Let's say at the, in the first year.
Okay, so assuming, because the proposed contract before you does not have a severance provision, you haven't negotiated the way that you might terminate this contract. So what you would have to do is, um, the candidate would be looking at the term that she has remaining on the contract. So it depends on when the termination occurred. So it could be, you know, two years, it could be two years, four months.
Give us worst-case scenario, because somehow the city always finds itself in the worst-case scenario, so give us that look.
And a worst-case scenario, I think you'd probably be looking at maybe two and a half years. I would maybe say, can we get through six months? We'd assume that we'd be working things out for six months. So in a two-and-a-half-year scenario, the contract says that there would be termination based on mutual agreement. That means she would come to the table, you would come to the table. Um, you could offer her a year severance, you could offer her no severance. She could ask for something, a package that is worth two-and-a-half years' worth of value. What she would not be able to do is take a cash payment. So let's say she came to the table and she says, I have two-and-a-half years left on my contract, I want the value of the two-and-a-half years. You would only be able to give her cash in the amount of 18 months, because the government code operates as a restriction and it ties your hands and say you cannot pay her more than 18 months in cash.
So worst-case scenario, about 18 months pursuant to the government code?
Correct.
And that's a post-City of Bell?
Correct.
Government code that was adopted to make sure that nobody gets paid excessively.
Yes.
Does anybody have an 18-month severance package in the county? I think the prevailing industry standard, if I'm not mistaken, is about six to 12 months.
Industry standard is six to 12 months. I'm not aware of anyone that has an 18 months listed in the, in the text of the contract. And we don't have 18-month severance, but we do have the disclosure of 18 months in this case.
Right, but if we decided to go to terminate or separate in, at that two-and-a-half or that six-month period where there's two-and-a-half years on the evergreen left, you know, the package would be fairly, well, we'd go to the, we'd, we'd, go to the 18-month ceiling or, or government code limit. And that 18 months would be the equivalent of about $600,000? Is that correct? Because we're talking about 420,000 in salary, some ancillary benefits. So between about half a million and 600,000, is that?
I think that's, that would, that would be correct.
Okay, and, and so this would certainly be out of the industry standards and probably more than we've ever done on a severance for anybody, because I recall, and we've gone through about maybe five or six city managers during my time, I don't remember anybody having any more than six to 12 months in the severance package when we've separated. And so, you know, and, and see, this is, this is no reflection on, on Ms. Ridge. I think if anything, this shows really strong negotiating skills on her part. And, um, you know, I wouldn't mind having her here, and I don't wanna dissuade that. I just wanna see how we can maybe meet and have a meeting of the minds where it makes sense to us, it makes sense to her. But, you know, one of the things I guess I'm a little troubled with is, um, you know, in the past, what we've done is we've had candidates come before us so we can compare, um, you know, who's a good candidate, who isn't, who has the best fit. And I think, um, here, had we done that, it would have been, you know, it would have been helpful. But, um, you know, the fact that we haven't had that exercise to have people come before us, and especially because we have new councilmembers, I know I certainly benefited from having people come and interview and us take a look at their CVs and just have them before us. We really haven't had that benefit here, so I, um, you know, I just think that I'm all for stability, but I'm also not for binding, uh, you know, councilmembers that are gonna be here for a while. I know my term is gonna be ending in 2020, and I certainly want them to have the ability to continue with somebody. And I hope that we can get, um, get to some agreement with, uh, with, with Ms. Ridge where she might consider, uh, you know, maybe being more commensurate with industry standards, and, and I could certainly get behind that. But given where we are right now, this is just a very, very difficult, um, you know, contract for me to support. And I review these for a living, and so I thought this was a little, a little bit more aggressive than, than I wish, um, you know, would be before us. So, um, in any event, those are my initial thoughts, and I think that this is a conversation, and, you know, hopefully there's nothing, this is coming from a good place where we want somebody to come here, and I'm glad there's interest. But at the same time, we can't not consider terms and provisions that would be adverse to the city.
Thank you. If I may, um, I just wanna ask a question, but then I wanna go around, because I know folks have more comment. Just on the mutual agreement portion, Madam City Attorney, doesn't that basically say that if we were to terminate, we'd have to both mutually agree? So if we don't agree to 18 months and we get in a tough negotiation, we can end up with a lower number if that becomes our steadfast position, correct?
Correct.
So the 18 months is no guarantee for her. By putting mutual agreement, we have to mutually agree.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to make sure that you understood in the contract, when I referenced the 18 months, it does not say anything, it says disclosure. It's actually titled disclosure, so everyone understands that 18 months is a government code disclosure.
That's just a California state law that says that's the maximum you could do. It's not compelling us to do that. It, it simply says that's an upper limit.
Yes.
So if this council or a few city councils were to say, we're only gonna do 12 months or six months, and we stick to that, if she doesn't mutually agree, we, we have no agreement, and she has no guarantee above that mutual agreement, correct?
Correct. The only thing that she would have, the only thing that the candidate is guaranteed under this contract is, if you decided that you wanted to terminate her and she had two years remaining on her term, she could say, I don't even wanna mutually agree to leave. And so that's when you would have to get into the negotiations about how much it would take to ask.
Correct, and, and that just becomes a negotiated settlement. Thank you. All right, I know there's other questions, I just wanted to clear that up, I think that was an important point. Uh, Councilmember Solorio, do you wanna go?
We could just go on the original order. I think it was, uh, Councilmember Viegas and Councilwoman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, then after that, you and then Ceci.
Sounds good.
Just wanted to give my opinion on this item. You know, I, I motioned to approve, and I'm gonna say why. You know, a year ago, we, a little over a year ago, we had the interviews of the city managers, and Raul Godinez was chosen at the time by the previous council. Um, I was very impressed with Ms. Ridge at the time, as a few of my colleagues here also were supportive during, uh, that interview process. She made it all the way to the very end, and the council decided to go with someone else. That other person had less experience than Ms. Ridge. That person, Mr. Godinez, had a year in El Monte as a city manager, and that was it. And then before that, it was just public works. So, and he's a friend, and he knows this is business, I don't mean to say it, you know, Raul, if you're watching, hey, hello. But, uh, you know, Ms. Ridge was, has been at the city of Anaheim for 24 years. She is the former internal audit manager, the former city treasurer, the city finance director, the city human resource director, the deputy city manager, and the assistant city manager. 24 years in one location, a big city similar to ours. That says a lot. She also has a lot of experience dealing with Disneyland, the big contracts. So we got Disneyland, we got the Honda Center, we got the Angels, we have all these other venues, not to mention all the numerous large hotels that they have to deal with and negotiate. We need someone with experience, ladies and gentlemen. We need someone who's been in the trenches, who also, who's been tested. The city of Anaheim deals with the same problems we have here. Crime reduction, the homelessness, the housing crisis, so on and so forth. Graffiti, gangs, the whole works. It's unfortunate, those bad things, but there's also some good things that she brings to the table, as such as negotiating with these large, um, companies. And we have that vision here for Santa Ana that we need to bring, uh, those ideas and that experience here also so we can make this a greater place. Santa Ana is great, we're making it greater. Do we want someone with, that we're gonna look for that, you know, pay less and less experience and try to, do you want that person negotiating Willowick? I don't think so. I'm gonna support this candidate, and I hope my colleagues do also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Jose Solorio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wasn't on the, on the ad hoc committee, so just some questions really more about the contract, because on the whole, I do agree, uh, Christine Ridge is a fine person, very well-trained, um, so, but I have just more questions about the contracts. Definitely, if I had worked on it, I would have, uh, left the remaining like this. But before I get into the contract, I think there is the legitimate question of what the total cost is. Uh, so I don't know if, uh, the staff can officially confirm whether what's in the staff report is the total annual compensation or, or what's missing.
I, I can explain to you what is terms of cash in the contract. I think when you look at total costs.
I could read, I could read that. My question is, uh, are there other monetary benefits that will be realized as part of an annual compensation package?
What has not been specified, there is a, there is some benefits by reference, because the candidate will be eligible for the executive director benefits by reference, so it references.
And what are they, and what are the cost values to that?
For example, there is a, um, a retirement health benefit. I don't recall off the top of my head what that percentage is, but there's a percentage of salary that is deposited into a retirement health plan. I'm not, I'm not executive eligible for the benefits, so I'm not familiar with what they all entail. I might be jealous. But I, so there, and then there are costs for PERS, which is the typical type of costs that are associated with the contract. You did notice, I think, in the summary that there is a contribution to the 457 plan, um, in the amount of $19,000.
So the CalPERS retirement cost, I mean, there are figures here. Is this just not complete, or is there an additional PERS cost in addition, or?
My understanding, I don't, and I, I don't know, I'm looking at the city manager because I don't calculate these, but my understanding is that there are different ways of calculating the PERS benefit. In past contracts, when we provided the staff report, the PERS benefit included some other types of benefits within that calculation. Our current finance director said in her professional opinion, she calculated the way that she is used to calculating it. That's why you see the difference between this number and the number that you saw in Mr. Godinez's staff report.
Well, what else is in the executive compensation package?
Medicare auto allowance, workers' compensation costs, life insurance, medical dental.
Well, those are on the same sheet. I'm, I'm trying to understand what is not on the sheet, because some question whether everything is on the sheet or not, and I'm getting the sense that there are some things missing, but.
I think other than retirement health benefit, the auto allowance is in the contract, it's already specified. The 457 is specified in the contract.
So on the retirement health, is it for life, or is it for?
It's a contribution that's made, it's a percentage of salary, so it, it varies based on salary.
That's the cost side, but as a beneficiary, they receive?
Yes, it's actually real money.
Pre-health insurance indefinitely?
Pre-health, it isn't that they get the health benefit, but pre-tax, the money, the city pays it into an account.
Right, that's the cost portion, I'm trying to just understand the beneficiary portion. So as, as, as an executive department, had everybody receives?
Yes, it is a benefit available, as I understand, to the executives in the city.
Okay, maybe in the meantime, because I don't know how many more questions we all have here and how long we'll be, but it may be something that's available on the website or somewhere that can be shared with, because I think for transparency's sake, we need to tell ourselves and the public how much this costs. We should not be voting for something with, where we do not know what the total cost is, number one. And part two, because an earlier agenda made mention that there wasn't enough money in the city manager's office in the general fund for this. And I don't know if by accident that fell off the agenda, but that's another reason why if there's an appropriation necessary, we need to know what, what that new delta is.
The, the action that put the city manager's office, um, over its current budget is?
Say that again?
The action that was taken by the city council that put the city manager's budget over budget this year was the release of Raul, not the hiring of this or entering.
Right, I'm not, I'm not asking about the reasons why, I'm, I'm asking, uh, but there's, number one, is there enough money in the city manager's office budget to pay for any delta of this cost, that's number one. Number two, there used to be a second part of this motion that spoke to approving that additional appropriation. I think, I think I remember it was somewhere in the 30,000 to 50,000. I think I remember it was somewhere in the $30,000 to $50,000 range, and that no longer is on the agenda. Why isn't that on the agenda?
Like I was saying, the nexus between this agreement and the lack of funds in the city manager's budget is not there. The reason the city manager's budget is in the negative is because of the release of Raul, the departure of two other senior-level officials, but there is no nexus between this agreement and the budget in the city manager's...
Well, isn't the nexus that the money would come from the city manager's office, and that's where it should come?
It does come from the city manager's office.
But then there's a nexus.
But the reason the city manager's office...
But I'm not asking about the nexus. I guess just my point is, we've been looking at other items, and is there money in that department to pay for it or not?
Yes.
And if not, we've been going on a series of these items to say, then we need a five-vote appropriation adjustment by the council to make that happen. And now I think I've heard you say two or three times that there is a real deficit in the city manager's office, so how is this going to be paid for for the remaining part of the year?
I'd like to finish my thoughts regarding the appropriation adjustment, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. The appropriation adjustment that was originally on here wasn't warranted. To pay the city manager for May, June, and July was always in the city's budget. We always knew we were going to have a city manager for 12 months of this year, and it was included in the budget, which was not... What was not included in the budget is the payout to the other three employees when they departed the city. That is what has put the budget on the eighth floor upside down.
So you're saying that that department is upside down, that we do intend to pay a salary to the city manager for May, June, and July, but that we're over budget and we still got to pay it for that?
And I'll have to adjust expenditures on the eighth floor.
And you what?
I will have to adjust expenditures in the eighth floor.
But if you don't adjust it, you're going to go over budget.
Yep, there's... Most of the departments will be that way, sir.
So with that knowledge, Madam City Attorney, there isn't money in the department. Wouldn't appropriation adjustment be necessary from the general fund to pay for the months of May, June, and July?
If...
In your professional opinion?
When?
I'm asking for a legal opinion. I did give you an opportunity to fully respond.
The strict interpretation, the city charter provides that if monies that were not budgeted at the beginning of the year are not available to pay obligations of the city, the city charter provides that the city council by five votes shall appropriate monies into the fund, into the fund that is going to be short or you weren't anticipating new costs.
Yeah, so for me, unless if I see a spreadsheet showing what the new changes would be to fund this out of this year's budget, I'm very reluctant to approve this tonight. We similarly with the police MOU contract, we at least did go through some investigations of where there might be some savings, and we found a sufficient number. So hopefully also during this meeting, we can get more information on that. With respect to the three years versus the 18 months, I have a legal question about that. So I know that, you know, there was a discussion with my other colleagues about, you know, the three-year evergreen versus 18 months. And, you know, I do understand that the absolute cap per state law is 18 months, but I would think if there's a long period that's more than 18 months, that us having that three-year clause is going to give the candidate an upper hand if it ever gets challenged. So we would end up paying closer to the amount of 18 months, or if that was a concern, we could have just said a year max on the severance, or six months. I mean, that's the going clause in all these agreements. Do you agree that it would give an upper hand leverage-wise on what the ultimate payout would be, given that we have a three-year, even though that the max is 18 per state law?
I don't know that I would characterize it as an upper hand. I think I would characterize it as the benefit of the bargain. The candidate here is asking for a solid three-year agreement. The candidate here has negotiated a three-year agreement with you. That's what she... That's all she has. That's all she will ever have. So the question is, if there comes a time when the parties want to part ways, she is going to negotiate hard for the value of her three-year agreement. I don't know... I don't want to characterize it as upper hand as much as I want the council...
Well, that's helpful. One last thing, because I know we have some other colleagues with questions. Can we, from the dais, we have the agreement, and on the issue of a three-year evergreen versus a two-year, I mean, it's a fairly simple change. Can we make that change from the dais tonight and kind of as a modified contract that we can vote on?
Well, council members, I will... I would say this. When you're negotiating with the highest officer of your city, I believe out of respect that the best way to negotiate is to do that, you know, through your ad hoc committee and through a process. If you were to make a reach-out agreement tonight on something that is not acceptable to the candidate, I don't know how that works. I don't know how the candidate would receive that, maybe feeling like, "I have no leverage here. I have nothing to negotiate." I don't see that as a true negotiation when it's imposed on them. Whether you want to do that as a matter of policy is up to all of you. This will be your employee.
Yeah, exactly, because I share that concern. I know that some do as well, and I don't know if at a certain point, if we can't or shouldn't do it ourselves, if maybe we can call her or reach out to her to see if she would be open to that, especially since state law limits it at 18 months anyway.
Yes, and I think that's a question for the ad hoc committee, as you were the ones that negotiated, how you might want to communicate that to her might be a question for the three members of the ad hoc committee.
Great, thank you.
Mr. City... Mr. Mayor. All right, ask that, and then we'll go. And then Sessi wants to speak as well.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, as a member of the ad hoc committee, do I violate any Brown Act if I disclose right now discussions that happened during the...
No, you don't, and you're in open session, so you're properly complying with the Brown Act.
Still trying to get the hang of the rules. So I was a member of the ad hoc committee, and I appreciate that you say that as the ad hoc, we shouldn't renegotiate with the candidate. And these were concerns that I had from the very beginning, but I feel like as part of the ad hoc committee, every question and concern I had was kind of just like, "No, no, 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 we don't need that on the staff report," or kind of thrown off. And I never... I don't know if it was because of, you know, the newest council member on here or with the least experience, but I feel like it was kind of just kept getting kind of, you know, toedled along. So there were concerns with... I see the numbers here on the staff report, and I hear the... What the members of the public have said. The last thing I wanted, and I said this before, were headlines. That ship has sailed. There's headlines all over the place. And... Because I don't want to see, you know, some crazy salary, you know. Are these numbers accurate, what's on here on the staff report in regards to her pay and her salary?
Yes, sir.
So what are these, the true amounts that people are talking about, the members of the public and questions that have brought up today? Because I'm having a hard time understanding that.
The... There's been subliminal comments, but I'm not sure what the comments actually come up to. There's been a lot of... There's a theme going through here, but I'm not sure what we're talking about. Is there a number we have wrong? Is there a category we have wrong? I would like to know about that.
I think it was just more in reference to comments that members of the public made today about reporting true amounts of compensation, which is what brings me to the question. If there is something else that I'm not aware of, you know, I'd like to know. And...
But there isn't.
No, but they mentioned there were the executive health benefits.
Let me just make a comment.
All right, let's try to get control back.
Let me make a comment.
Let's get control.
I don't want to use the word true.
Is this accurate?
Yes, I was going to say, I don't want to make... Use that word "true," because I think that somehow is suggesting that we're hiding something or got something wrong.
Correct.
And so I think what the question is, does the staff report reflect all of the cost associated with this contract versus the true amount? I think all of, and I believe that... I'm not the finance director, so I'm not going to say something I don't know, so I look to the city manager to represent whether that is. I am aware that there is a difference of opinion as to how you calculate the PERS cost and whether the calculation of those PERS costs were included in this staff report. That is the only issue that I am aware of.
And the health benefit. You mentioned there was a health benefit.
And then there's the two... There's that, and I don't know what the percentage is. We're looking for it of salary, and we will find that.
So those are the same health benefits?
Go ahead, Mayor Protem, but Councilman Iglesias wants to speak as well.
Same healthcare benefits and everything that Raul had in the previous contract.
Same health savings.
Yes, so there's not like... There's no trick pony here or anything going on. That's what I'm trying to get at.
But it has a cost.
This is why we are hidden cost. That's why, ladies and gentlemen, that's why it's so hard to get somebody here qualified because of this. And we need some stability. We're bleeding on the eighth floor up there. We have five strong positions that are vacant. We need a captain at the ship. I wouldn't... You know, we vetted this candidate a year ago, and this is why it's so hard to have someone come here. Are we going to attract someone of quality to come here with this much of noise? Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Iglesias, please.
Thank you all for your questions, and this is the reason why back in December, January, I opposed us letting go of Mr. Godinez, because I knew we were going to be faced with this situation. And it's unfortunate that we're here, you know, trying to, at the last minute, trying to get all these questions answered. And my understanding of the entire process, what is that? When Ms. Christine was interviewed about a year, a year and a half ago, there was three, I think it was Mr. Solorio, the mayor, and Mayor Protem, who had agreed to support her. Is that correct? And then so when, in closed session, when we're asked to see who wanted to be in the ad hoc committee, I know that Mr. Penalosa, you graciously accepted. And so, you know, so I knew that we would be able to get this all squared away. And one thing that I, you know, I am not comfortable with, it was with the process, is that, you know, I wish we could have had more interviews from the public. I wish we could have had more input, but unfortunately, we don't. We're here, and it's very frustrating that we're here and we're asking these questions at the last minute. And one thing that I had asked the Madam City Attorney was if you could give me a copy of, you know, of all the contracts, you know, similar contracts that have been approved in the past, you know, two, three years within the county, and also to have Mrs. Ridge's current contract from the Gringale, and also Mr. Godinez's contract. And it pretty much, comparing it to Mr. Godinez, it's, when it comes to the amount of money, it's the same thing. I mean, that's what I'm looking at. It was the value of it, even though it's written differently, it's the same... It's close to the same amount of money that we, as a city, were still liable to, based on the recommendation of approving Mr. Godinez to be the city manager for this city. But one thing that I wanted to ask, and I think it's already been asked by many of my colleagues, is about the evergreen, you know, that clause. And just to understand what that means is, okay, she's requested a three-year contract, but after three years, say, and in the first two years is all, you know, everyone's getting along, everything. So within the three years, I mean, the first three years, we're on the hook, just to be understood, or we're on the hook for three years every time. It never goes away from three years.
If you don't give notice, you will always have a three-year contract. Technically, you will always have a two-year, 11-month contract, because it's that notice provision. So you're always going to have the three years running on that. So you're going to go through, if you entered into it now, you'd have two years and one month remaining. Then if you don't give notice, that year adds on. So you're always going to have somewhere between two years and one month and three years at any given time. I want to add something, because I think this is what may be causing confusion. Other cities have evergreen provisions in the contract, and the reason they have them is because they need it to cover the one year of severance. So these other cities have these contracts that are for three years. They are three years. It's at the end, as you get towards the end of the third-year period, that they add on a year. The reason they do that is because if a city manager is into the contract two and a half years, and they have a one-year severance, they need to add on those six months, because the government code says you can't pay more than what's left in the remaining term of the contract. So that's where you see evergreen provisions. But the purpose of that evergreen is to protect their severance payment. In this case, we are not trying to protect a severance payment, right? Because we don't have one. What we're trying to do, as I understand the candidate, when she negotiated, she wanted the stability of knowing that if the city council gives her notice that they want to terminate, that she's not automatically sent on her way. She has two options. She can either negotiate a mutually acceptable departure, and that's in the contract, or she can say, "Thank you for giving me notice. I'm going to stay my remaining two years."
As a city manager, she would stay.
Yes, yes. And I would say, in reality, and speaking from practice, once you're not getting along with the city manager, you usually will reach a mutually agreeable separation.
And then that comes into the clause with the 18 months.
Correct, and then that would say that in terms of cash, the most you could pay her is 18 months.
The most, but we could negotiate something that is lower than the 18 months.
Correct, if she was agreeable to that, you could do that.
Okay, so... And then my other question would be, what was the amount that we paid out for Mr. Godinez?
I want to say three... Let me find it.
Okay, okay, so why are you looking for that? So right here, I know we're... And for me, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, because it's very, I think it would be very embarrassing to have a city manager that could have come here, but then she didn't, he or she didn't, because, you know, we're not getting along. But then again, this is... My hope is that, I hope she knows what she's getting herself into, because obviously, on this dais here and this council, there's yet a majority. It's, you know, it's usually four, it's usually, you know, you saw the first vote, it went 3-3, so the motion died. So it's... What I've noticed my four months that I've been here, there's a power struggle here on this council, and I am just so disappointed that this is where we're at. And, you know, I just don't want it to drag on any longer, and I'm hoping that, you know, by today's vote, that we put this to rest. And I'm hoping that what we do is the best for the residents here in Santa Ana, because it's long overdue, and I know that we need stability, and we need someone who is going to be making those tough decisions right now. Because I know in the past month or so, just the votes that we've been taking on some of the projects, I don't think they've been... And then this is no disrespect to you, Stephen, no disrespect to you, but you have a lot on your hands, and, you know, you're running your department, and yet, you know, you're trying to keep us all on the same page. But we need someone who's going to keep us on that same page, and someone who is going to be working for the residents of Santa Ana. And I'm hoping it's not for a single member of this city council, because whoever comes here to this city council, I am, mark my words, I'm holding them accountable. I am going to call them out when it warrants, and I'm hoping that they do the best for this city, because that's what we need. We need someone who's not self-interest. And unfortunately, I've seen a lot of votes on this council that have been very self-interest. And I'm just... I'm tired of that, and I'm hoping that we move forward and that we make the best decisions for the city and for the residents of this city, because that's what we were elected for, is to serve the residents of this city. So the payout amount, it would have been the same... Yeah, you have it?
It's $394,000.
Which is something that we didn't have to let go if we would have kept Mr. Godinez, right? So we would have had enough money in the city manager's department to pay for it. So I think it was more on a... On the, I would say the responsibility lies on, you know, on the other members that voted for that, for letting Mr. Godinez go. So I'm just hoping that what today's... Because you guys are pretty much, you know, my colleagues have asked a lot of the questions that I was going to ask, so I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse. So I don't, I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse. But my concern is, it was the 18 months. And now knowing that we do have negotiation and hoping, you know, and I know, you know, she'll do the right thing for, you know, she'll do the right thing if, you know, we do vote for her. And I think it's just, oh, and one thing I'm going to ask, and I'm hoping she's watching, is what I would want for her in the first 100 days for her to do is to get to know the community. It's for her to have town halls. It's for her to get to know each neighborhood association. Because that's something that's very important. And I'm hoping that on the council here, you guys would be able to support me because that's something that people want to know, who is their top, you know, that, you know, the, the top vote, I mean, the top leaders of this community definitely are the residents. We must never forget that. But the one who is helping us move the city forward is the city manager. Just like it was with the school district, it was the superintendent. So I'm hoping that within the first 100 days, she's able to meet with every neighborhood association and make herself visible, visible in the community. Because that's what we need. We need someone who is reachable, someone who has an open-door policy and someone who works for the entire interest of all the residents here, not just for one member or two members of this council. And I hope she never says something about that, "I work for the council majority." Because I've heard that before in many of the, in many of the appointments, like, "I work for the majority." No, you work for the residents here. So I'm hoping, you know, that we do move forward and, and just holding her accountable is my number-one concern.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to make some comment and, and hopefully at that point, maybe call for the question. Look, a lot of things are going on here in the city that we don't really know about until there's a problem. Right now, we're talking about money and how much and what do we do, et cetera, et cetera. Today, I got a call from the Orange County Transportation Authority. In our Public Works Department for Bristol Street, we've not been keeping the type of records that Measure M2 requires. As a consequence of that, we're probably going to have to return $700,000 because it wasn't properly documented. Not because we didn't spend the money, because we didn't properly document it per the requirements of Measure M2. And so, look, that money is going to come from somewhere. At the end of the day, we'll pay it back. Nobody's really going to notice or see or say or have a big debate about it. But what I'm telling you is there's a lot of things like that right now at the city that are not being taken care of properly. Sonia and Stephen, are you?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, that are not being taken care of properly. And I believe that with a, a, a well-trained professional city manager that, that's worked in all these different departments, yes, she's been at Anaheim, not here in San Ana, but there's a lot of similarities between our cities that we're not going to have these type of surprises. I, I don't need to go through a litany, but there is a litany of things that we have to discuss on a regular basis in closed session, stuff that didn't go right now. We're having to pay the piper over and over and over again. I'm not saying she's going to come here and overnight everything's going to be taken care of, but I am saying eventually it will. Let her come, let her start working. I, I believe she'll have a handle on all that is relevant. I also want to take a moment and thank members of the committee, in particular, Councilman Penylosa and Mayor Protem Villiegas, because this is not an easy thing. You know, this whole process is not an easy thing to go through. And I believe that at the end of the day, we've got a good package here. It's a good compromise. It is, is it perfect? No, things are never perfect. But you can't let the perfect get in the way of the good. If you're always seeking perfection, you never do anything. And that's even worse because meantime, time is passing, things that go wrong are costing the city money. And that really hurts us and hurts our bottom line. When I look at major contracts that we have coming up, like the trash contract, we need a strong leader and a strong city manager to handle that. Otherwise, we're just throwing an RFP out to the wolves. I mean, everybody's going to have ideas, they're going to do this, do that. And we don't have a solid city manager at the helm guiding us through these processes. You know, folks mentioned Willow, a couple of folks mentioned Willow. That's a huge train coming down the track, literally. You know, we, we've got Garden Grove that wants to work with us. And maybe they'll end up selling the land and then it all comes to San Ana. Or maybe it's all, or maybe it's a joint effort. But we need somebody that's going to be able to negotiate because that's a multi-billion-dollar deal ultimately. If it's done well, that's a very, very large deal. We have, you know, currently, the streetcar. That's already under construction. All you have to do is drive up and down the route and they're building stuff. It's coming. Are we going to be able to rise to the occasion and take advantage of it and bring jobs and, and nice centers to the, to the train stations or not? I mean, the, the streetcar stations or not? Again, we need somebody at the helm. You know, issues like homeless, you know, they've got homeless in Anaheim, pretty similar to what we've got. We've built a shelter here, they're building shelters there. We're all working hard to try to keep on top of it. But I'll tell you one thing, if we don't really handle it well, it's going to become a revolving door. We're, we're going to shelter some homeless and we'll get new homeless in. We'll shelter homeless, we'll get new, you know, homeless in. Only way to get ahead of it is to be very aggressive and to, and to try to manage it as best you can. And for that, you need a, a captain at the head of the ship. Otherwise, you know, we're going to be like other cities that can never really get out of their way or get ahead of things. So when it comes to crime or gangs or things of that nature, they've got them all in Anaheim. And when I look at the, at the money, because I know that, you know, we're all, there's allegations that we're, we don't know how much we're paying or, I, I think, you know, Councilman Penylosa asked an excellent question. Are these numbers accurate? And I think our, our city manager said, "Yes, these numbers are accurate." Yeah, maybe there's a different calculation, but we're not hiding an extra $200,000 somewhere that we're not aware of. It's all here. And at the end of the day, you know, the headlines that, that were, you know, gardenered a few years ago when we have, when we had Mr. Cavasas coming from Phoenix, they're not going to happen here. Because already, you know, this is lower than the city of Anaheim. Look at the headlines that they got. They didn't, they didn't, not as it relates to pay. And, and so I think we're going to be in good shape as it comes to that. And I think the right decision is to move forward today and start addressing all these issues. Will she be able to handle this appropriation adjustment issue? I think absolutely. You know, first of all, we're going to have a new budget in a matter of a few days, not a year or anything like that, it'll be a few days. And that'll be the first test. And if she's willing to come here and say, "I'll take that risk, I'll take that challenge," I think that speaks more to her true value and, and her true desire to come here and make a difference. So with that, what I'd like to do is ask for, ask for the vote. Final questions, Councilmember Vince Armiento?
Well, I think because, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate that the opportunity maybe have a little additional comment because, you know, this is a big decision. And so I think somebody said it earlier, we should have been doing this months back, right? And normally, what you do when you hire a leader, a captain, whatever acronym you want to put on somebody who's going to lead this organization, you do a full-blown, robust search and you ask these questions of every candidate. And if you look at the can, I mean, there's one thing that we did. We did go out and we asked people to submit applications. And that's what nobody's talking about. And I remember seeing a list of candidates. One in particular, who was a former city manager in Garden Grove, extremely experienced, wanted very little relative to what's being asked today. And I wish we would have had a chance to interview him and others on that list because it gives you context. And I'm, and this is nothing critical of Ms. Ridge. If anything, she rises to the top if she's being compared. And you feel better about that decision. But I guess what I'm having a problem with now is, you know, number one, not having had that full-blown ability to, to, to interview others that were on that list of people who wanted to come to the city. And I think that's one thing, you know, I was real happy to see at least a dozen people that wanted to come to the city and, and fill that position. And it was a really small search that we did. We just sent it out to, to local folks. You know, I'm a little, a little troubled because I think what we're doing here is, let me put on sort of my fiscal conservative hat because some people think it's just theirs. And I think all of us want to be, you know, careful with public funds and not give monies away that don't belong to us. And we want to spend it intelligently and invest it intelligently. We have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that in the event that something doesn't work out and chemistry doesn't work out here and we're not happy, she's not happy, and we have to separate. I think there was some points made, and I think it was by Councilman Solorio that talked about just leverage. And so if we do have to separate, you know, yeah, the, the salary's kind of commensurate with what Mr. Godinez had, our former city manager, but we vetted Mr. Godinez. He went through a whole litany of questions being, competing against other candidates for that position. Here, we didn't do that. And so now, you know, with somebody who has a three-year Evergreen, and I think you put it correctly, Madam City Attorney, it's like a two-year, 11-month thing. That's their starting point. Let's say we start at zero, they start at two years and 11 months. We're going to meet somewhere in the middle because that's how negotiations happen. And we're going to get to that government code amount, which is an 18-month threshold. We've never done that. I don't think anybody has a contract with a severance or a package that's 18 months here in the county. I mean, again, the standard, the industry standard is six months to, to, to 12 months. So I would be willing, you know, and, and just so in good faith, I would be willing to even say, you know, to Councilman Solorio's point, we don't even know if we have the money to pay this. And maybe this is a little premature to be talking about spending money that we don't have or we're not certain that we have. Is to say maybe this gives us an opportunity to have, you know, somebody get back to Ms. Ridge and say, you know, do you, would you be willing to reduce that? Or maybe insert an open clause for a severance that would cap it at 12 months? I'd be willing to even go there. But I'm really concerned about exposing us to something in excess of that because it sets precedent. And once we set precedent, the next city manager, because we will have one at some point, they're going to say, "You just gave, you just gave my predecessor 18 months." And are, do we want to go down that slippery slope? And I think it's probably not prudent. I'd like to see her come here. I don't want to dissuade her, but at the same time, she has to respect the fact that we have a fiduciary obligation to ask these questions of anybody.
All right, thank you. Final comments and we'll vote. Councilor Solorio?
Yes, I know there was still a question on what benefits or compensation items may not be here. And I don't know if, have we found what the entirety of the executive compensation packages?
Yeah, there is a 1.75% Vantage Care Medical Retirement Subsidy Plan that amounts to $5,075 a year.
So that's what's not in here?
Correct.
Okay, what about, is there a retirement healthcare benefit that continues after retirement?
That's the retirement subsidy plan I just read off.
So that's five?
The, the amount per year, based on a $290,000 annual contract, would be $5,075.
Per year or total?
That's the cost to the city.
So it's, okay, so it's, okay, that's helpful. What about, I know sometimes, and I looked up at the city's compensation package just to refresh my memory on what else might be in here. I know we often speak about the employer-paid EPMC, I think we call it. I forget what the M and the C is for. And I think it's also another PERS-related benefit. Are we aware if executive agency directors or people in the executive team get paid that? EPMC, I'm asking about EPMC specifically.
Yeah, another common term for that is PERS-on-PERS.
Okay.
And all of the executives, and most of the staff have that.
And what's the value of that benefit?
For, for her contract?
In her case, yeah, for this, for this, the remainder of this fiscal year and the full next year.
It's already reflective in, in the.
So you think that's included in the $28,000?
Yeah.
Are you, we're sure?
In the $20,000.
On the $20,000, I said $20.
In the table at the end of the staff report.
Yeah, the CalPERS there, it says $28,000.
Yeah.
So you know that the EPMC is included in that?
Nearly certain, but if you'd like me to get back to you, I'll be glad to.
Yeah, I don't see our budget director here though, unless if she's next door. But I would like a confirmation on that. PERS can be very expensive. And is there a retirement healthcare benefit? I guess that's the amount you just mentioned, okay. What about, depending upon how vacation pay, sick pay and holiday pay works, those have a monetary value as well. I know some of it kind of accrues over time, but based off how the contract is negotiated, there's a value there, especially with sick leave. I think there are mandates on what, what we need to do for the number of paid items. So neither vacation pay nor sick leave nor holiday benefits are on this table either. So what's, what's the value of those items? Maybe this chart isn't complete?
Let me check with Finance Director on communicating with her.
And again, for me, I don't really have an issue with the candidate. I think she's stellar. But I do have issue with the, the contract and things missing and incomplete information. And honestly, in some cases, misinformation. And again, I don't understand why the appropriation pieces on the agenda haven't gotten a good explanation on that. So I, I have many concerns and this is just really a summary of the concerns that I have.
Thank you. A couple additional comments, I believe, Councilmember Iglesias and Mayor Protem.
It's just very interesting how some of my colleagues talk about fiduciary duties and nickel and diamond a contract. When they vote on a police MOU that costs $25 million, that are definitely going to put us in a hole. And then you have to try to go get some money out of Measure X to fulfill this. And you're worried about this contract? Give me a break.
We'll find the money for this, is all I'm saying, brother.
Councilmember Ceci Iglesias, please.
Mayor Protem, you stole my thunder. I was about to say that. Because it, it's $25 million that, you know, that we are, put this city into a liability. And then right now, for appropriations for, for the police department contract is what, over $4 million? How much is it, Madam Attorney? The appropriations that we need to be for the, for the police department?
I don't recall the specific appropriation. I think just for this year, it was.
Close to $5 million, right?
Yeah, $4.2 million, I think is the ultimate number that they came to, yeah.
And this, and this, and this is what I wish we could have done with that contract. Because we should have looked into it more and to see where we're putting this city into a liability. I, I, I understand where Councilman Solorio is talking about, you know, talking about all these different benefits, which would be the holiday pay, which would be the vacation pay and all that. All the employees that work for the city get the same thing, right?
They all get according to their MOU. So in this case, the executives have vacation and sick according to the executive director's resolution.
And I believe in this one, I don't know if I saw, but I think it was like 80 hours, I think, of vacation pay?
The proposal here is that she get a bank of 80 hours, which is not unusual because when someone starts and they're coming from another job, they would have no vacation accrued. So she negotiated at least a, a small bank and then accrual rates. I think it comes up to about four weeks a year.
So if she's, if she's doing her job, this is where I'm at. I think as a manager, if you do your job, you get your job done. It's pretty much you're on a salary. What a salary means is like you, sometimes you'll work eight hours, sometimes you'll work 24 hours. It doesn't matter as long as the job gets done, correct?
Right, especially in her case. She won't get overtime and she'll be required to attend all the city council meetings, the committee meetings that go along with that, any of your community meetings. And she's not paid extra for that. I believe that the executive MOU, executive resolution has some like administrative time to make up for that. But she will make her own schedule. She'll come in as a professional and get the job done when she needs to get it done.
So we're going to hold her accountable to getting the job done, moving the city forward and ensuring that she's. forward, and ensuring that she's helping to get this city out of a financial mess that we're already in.
And one of the things that I would really strongly recommend that this council do is you're coming up on your budget and that you have a meeting with her. I recommended this the last time and I recommended it the time before, so third time's a charm. I would strongly recommend that the council establish a work plan for the city manager in a public session so that you, the community, and the manager all understand what your collective goals are and hold her accountable to those goals.
So is Stephen going to come back with some information or where did he go?
I think he's trying to get it.
We scared him away.
If he needs more time, I'd be okay with a research. Yes, Councilmember Penyalosa.
And no one's questioning her, the holiday pay or the vacation pay. I think that's standard. You know, she deserves it. Whoever the candidate is deserves holiday and vacation, and no one's questioning that. I think the question here is why weren't the leave benefits, sick and vacation pay, and the PERS-on-PERS, which I had brought up to Director Pham in numerous meetings that I had, and why aren't those calculated into the chart here? The PERS-on-PERS and the vacation and, because that would be a payout in the event that she would leave, we would have to pay out the amount of vacation hours and that she has, but that's not on here.
Yeah, and I believe that's what he's trying to do right now. I wasn't involved in any of that part, so I think he's trying to talk to the Finance Director right now and get some information.
If I may, why don't we take like a five or 10-minute break, let him calculate that because that's an important question.
Good, because I need to use a rush.
I do too. Thank you, everybody. I want to reconvene our meeting, and I just want to thank staff. I know you've been working trying to verify numbers. I know you've been working trying to verify numbers. And an excellent question that I think was asked by Councilmember David Benyalosa when he wanted to know what is the PERS on PERS? I.e., a check that the city's going to have to write on an annual basis to PERS in order to cover this employee? And what is that number? Where is it shown? So, I'd like to turn it over to staff to answer that question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PERS, it's the third line down in the table called CalPERS Retirement Cost. In speaking with our Finance Director, we just confirmed it's almost 10%, 9.87%, which comes out to be, 10% would be $29,000. And she's represented it as the $28,043. So, her number is indeed accurate.
So, it is shown, it's there, and you confirmed that it's accurate?
We have through a conversation.
Okay, final questions, because...
What's a clarification on that? And there's...
Go ahead.
Other I'm not missing. So, I know with Raul Godinez, comparable salaries. When we did the cost out for them some years ago in the staff report, that equivalent of the PERS and the EPMC or the PERS on PERS was like $96,000 or something. That's a pretty huge difference on what his estimate was for that versus $20,000. I mean, this is, you know, three times less at least.
Why do you think the difference if there were? I don't think the contract provision was any different because it's the same benefit of all executive directors.
All right, let's let him answer, please.
Yeah, there are two parts of CalPERS contributions. Normal costs and a contribution to reduce the city's unfunded liability. More than five years ago, CalPERS started expressing unfunded liability contribution at a flat dollar amount. They made changes. It took us a while to make that change. The change in that was reflected in this contract but wasn't reflected in Raul's contract.
So, she has a lower PERS and PERS on PERS benefit?
No, it's just the different ways that we calculate it. And CalPERS started expressing separately as unfunded liability versus normal cost.
But I'm not talking about the unfunded liability PERS. I'm talking about the EPMC benefit.
We already covered that part of it. Now, you're asking about PERS calculation.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out why hers is $28,000 and his was $96,000 even though that benefit is identical in the Executive Agency Director package?
Mm-hmm.
What's the reason for a difference? I mean, it's like, you know, $50,000 less or $60,000 less, $70,000 less per year. Almost $70,000 less per year. We could get back to it. I'm just, I guess, relaying, I feel uncomfortable if that really is accurate. And then, you were going to check on the cost out for the other provisions like vacation, sick leave, holiday, and what the amount is. I mean, if we're approving a contract and we're trying to be transparent on what the annual cost is, those are pretty basic benefits.
Yeah, those are.
That we should know about and should be costed out in the total table. So, what is it so that we can add that to the 384?
There's an explanation for sick time, holiday time, and vacation time. Those are things that should be calculated as separation. So, if we separated, we would have to pay those things out to her, correct?
Right, the rest of these.
This isn't a separation calculation you have in front of you.
But they would use this as a separation calculation, too.
But to your point, at $128 an hour, the bank of 40 hours of sick leave would be $5120.
Okay.
And the bank of 160 vacation hours would be $20,480. But she hasn't taken those hours. She hasn't cashed those hours out.
But there's a value withdrawal contract that costed it out on the front end.
If she separates, there's a cost to it.
Okay.
And if she cashes it out...
What's the third one?
If I could, if she cashes it out, there's a cost to it. If she takes the vacation, it's her regular salary.
Okay, so that's two of the three items that I asked about.
And I don't know too many city managers to take that kind of vacation in their first year.
No, I understand. But I asked for vacation, sick leave, and holiday. These are two of the three cost figures. What's the third cost figure? Vacation pay? Sick leave?
The sick leave accrual is 80 hours. She's able to take eight hours of sick leave per month.
Okay, and what is that total?
Eight times 120.
Well, they took time to calculate the sellout, folks. I mean, so I'm just trying to get it back, so I don't need to do it myself.
Would it make any difference that Raul Godinez was a Santa Ana City employee years before this? And that gets calculated and then the total sum, or no?
It does in the unfunded liability part of it, yes.
Thank you.
Eight hours of sick leave would amount to $1,024.
$1,024 for the whole year per month, probably, right?
Per month.
So, times 12, let's say that's $12,000. So, that's at least another $37,000. So, really, the total compensation isn't 3, 4. It's at a minimum, you know, that plus $27,000. So, it's way in excess of $400,000 total, really unknown and unclear whether EPMC benefit is in there or not. So, that's why I'm comfortable voting for it, because I don't know how much this really costs, whether the money's in the city manager's office or the strategy to pay for it, given that we typically put the appropriation on the same agenda as an agreement. And obviously, that was removed from this agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Benyalosa, you asked some of the initial questions. Are you satisfied? Do you have more questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
I just...
Go ahead.
I just had, I just wanted to say that, you know, I interviewed her personally and spent some time with her on the phone and in person. She's a very qualified person. There's no doubt about that. She could, and I told our department heads this, she could run circles around all of them. HR, finance, you know, there's no doubt about that. I dug and dug and dug, tried to find something, why not to hire her, and I couldn't find anything. I did ask her some questions, and her answers did kind of, one of the things I asked her about were how she would pretty much just come in and take control of the ship. And her answers were not bad, you know, so... But I do, and I don't have an issue with any of these benefits and vacation pay and PERS on PERS, but I just wanted to make sure that we are, you know, providing accurate information with everything that the contract would entail. And the PERS on PERS with what Mayor Protem Villegas said, you know, I'm just trying to, I wish Catherine was here because I'm trying to just understand that part of it. And you're saying that she wasn't available by phone at least, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, she was. She answered her phone.
So, these numbers are coming from her?
Correct. She's walking me through how to calculate.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. I'm trying to wrap this up. I know several people have spoken several times. Councilmember Iglesias, you've only spoken once.
So, just to understand the entire package, Madam City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, the vacation pay, the sick pay, and it's something that every employee gets, correct?
Correct, in some amount, yes.
Yes, okay. But if she's taking vacation time during the year without cashing it out, is that a separate amount from her salary?
No.
No, so it's part of that salary?
It's part of the salary.
Okay. Is it part or is it not part of the salary?
She didn't know. She said if she doesn't take vacation.
But it doesn't count.
Yeah, it accrues from year to year to year.
For example, let me just give you an example. When Raul Godinez cashed out when he left employment of the city, not only did we pay him the one-year severance, but if he had time on the books of vacation, we paid him that time at his hourly rate, which was probably like about $128 an hour. So, it's hard to put a value on it, but there's a value to it if they leave. And in our MOUs, many of our employees are allowed to cash out their vacation if they don't work. So, they receive their salary. If they don't take the vacation, then they might get a check for $20,000 or $40,000, whatever the value of their vacation is. It's hard to put a number on it for you because we don't know.
But every employee gets that opportunity. So, it's not anything that is different than our...
No, and I just think the question is, how much is it? You know, they could give you a worst-case scenario or a...
No, so I get it, because when I used to work for the county of Orange, that's how it was. Managers, we were there regardless if we were there four hours, we were there 20 hours, but we had to get the job done. So, my, so just to wrap it up, and I promise I will, is we're doing this, if we were to wait, say, two more months, how much money, I mean, and also go through the full-on recruitment, how much money did it cost you guys last time to do a recruitment?
The last recruiter, I think, charged the city about $20,000 or $30,000. You had an item on your agenda a few weeks ago. The cost for the recruiter to redo the recruitment is $4,000 because if the candidate did not stay with you for more than a year, then that's their discount. So, if they didn't stay for two years, so since the manager did not stay here for two years, the recruitment company would do that recruitment for $4,000.
And then, how long does a recruitment last usually?
Or take?
Or takes?
Four months, it's a solid one by the time you... But we are half, we're in the middle of a flyer, it's been out, except an application. I would say two months to file.
So, it would take us almost till the end of the fiscal year.
And then, for them to start would be another period of time in that calculation. City managers don't leave their current position with two weeks notice. It usually requires special consideration.
Okay, so with that, I just wanted to make sure that that was out in public. And the PERS on PERS, CalPERS Retirement Cost is included in the $28,000, and the following is $31,000, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason it's going up to $31,000, because that's how, unfortunately, throughout the state, that's what's happening. Even with our police association, with their contract, it's the same thing. That's one thing that we were concerned about, right?
Yes, every contract that we enter for our employee groups creates additional costs for the community, and PERS on an annual basis is increasing for all public agencies around the state.
Unfortunately, okay. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, I'm going to call the clerk and ask her to please call a roll call vote.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
No with comment. So, my brief comment is I just want us to make sure that, one of the things that we were talking about is compensation, the other one is separation. And so, to the extent that we're clear that if something doesn't work out here, and Ms. Ridge comes on, and I'm almost agnostic to the candidate as well, I'm just specifically looking at these terms, to the extent that we come to some understanding or we negotiate a separation, she can go up to 18 months, which is what's legally allowed, that amount would be close to half a million dollars or in excess of half a million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, if you're paying her salary, it'd be 290 plus 145.
Right. So, and also, that's something that we've never paid to anybody here. Our severance packages have maxed out at one year. Is that correct?
Since I've been with the city for the last six years, yes, you've had one-year severance provisions.
All right. And today, do we know what the amount is that we have available on hand and funds from the city manager's account to be able to accurately say that the funds are there to cover this?
Currently, there is about 61, the budget's about $275,000 in the hole on the eighth floor right now. And that's due to three major payouts.
So, look, for those reasons, I just can't support the contract. That doesn't mean the candidate is flawed, but I just think this contract is much, much too excessive for me to support, so I'm a no.
All right, thank you. Please continue.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
I'm a yes.
Mayor Polido?
Yes.
Councilmember Iglesias?
With everything that I've said, I would have to say yes because it's the right thing to do in order for us to get on track and have somebody here that is going to lead this ship.
Councilmember Pinalosa?
I agree with what Councilwoman Iglesias said. You know, it's unfortunate that I came into this, and, you know, we need somebody, you know, there's nobody upstairs. I walk the eighth floor, and it, there's literally nobody up there. It's embarrassing. So, yes.
Councilmember Solario?
I'm fine with the candidate, but I do oppose the contract and the lack of transparency. So, it's no.
All right, thank you. So, that's 4-2.
Correct.
Thank you. Now, I want to...
I have a question about the appropriation amount that hasn't been...
It's not on the floor right now.
But we can't have an item if it's not funded. I think there's provisions in our charter that says we can't fund things that don't have an appropriation.
Bring that up at the next council meeting. Right now, I'm going to go to 65C.
Is that correct, City Attorney? Is there any requirements?
Sam Romero, why don't you start coming up, please?
City Attorney? I'm going to keep asking.
Jose, please, it's not on the agenda.
No, but we've got to know.
Can I be recognized by the chair?
It's not in the agenda, 65C. Go ahead, Sam.
Good evening, folks. I'm here in the fairness of appointing or going to the second person that got the votes on the ward four. And I think to be fair, as you well know, Logan is fair in everything, including helping the mayor's family when the city wanted to destroy their building, correct?
I remember that, Sam.
I'll remind you every so often.
Every five years.
Anyway, I think it's only fair, this man that came in second did all the work that was necessary to run through that office, so I think you have to get him on the council.
How come you don't say his name?
Pardon? Phil Becerra.
All right.
Is that good enough?
Yeah.
You understand?
I do, but you were talking about him in the third person.
It's not Becerra, it's Bacerra.
Not Becerra.
Okay, thank you.
Bacerra, thank you, Sam. And I'm glad you're back. I know you've been ill. It's nice to see you back. Peter Katz, followed by Father Michael Mai.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. I support Phil because he was the runner-up, but I would like, I talked to the city attorney a couple of weeks ago. I think before this happens again, we amend the charter to include a succession clause in the charter that either the runner-up automatically succeeds this post or a provision of how that person is selected so that we don't go through this possible expense and long-drawn-out process again. And also, tomorrow, one of yous could, God forbid, die or have a heart attack or get in a traffic accident and be incapacitated for six months or more. There should be a provision for filling that in case the council member is incapacitated. So, these are some things you might want to look at before this happens again to save some money. You know, the United States Constitution was amended when we found out we had no succession clause for the President of the United States, and so, the Constitution was amended. However, the language is so poor that if the president is incapacitated, there's no definition there, and that will be a long-drawn-out battle before the Supreme Court, and the Constitution will have to be amended again. So, I think you have plenty of time to possibly address this and amend the charter to create a succession clause for somebody, for a vacancy or for somebody that's incapacitated. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, Father Michael Mai, and then followed by Carl Benninger with two N's, and then a third N after the I, so really, three N's, Carl.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Reverend Michael Mai, former director of the Vietnamese Catholic Center in Santa Ana. And presently, I am member of the Vietnamese Intervent Council in America. I'm here tonight on behalf of Professor Zhou Thanh Nguyen, the chairman of the Vietnamese Intervent Council, would like to read his letter to the Honorable Mayor Polido and council members of the city of Santa Ana. Dear Mayor and council members, the Vietnamese Intervent Council in America consists of Vietnamese spiritual leaders of Buddhist, Khaodai, Catholic, Christian, Hoa Ha and Orthodox religions in the United States. Our mission are to promote cooperation and respect among people... Our mission are to promote cooperation and respect among people of various religions, to encourage people of own faiths, to work together for mutual understanding, to help protect religious freedom, to celebrate faith traditions, and to be advocates for justice. The Vietnamese Intervent Council in America is proud to support to Mr. Ken Nguyen for appointment to the Santa Ana City Council representing Ward Four. Mr. Ken Nguyen has continually been a high-regarded and respected leader in the Vietnamese-American community for over forty years. Mr. Ken Nguyen is a compassionate and caring individual who has given an enormous amount of time and effort in volunteer services. It is credited to his selfless service and positive role in community that he was services, that he was appointed as an external affair officer on the Vietnamese Intervent Council in America in two thousand fourteen.
I hate telling fathers anything, but, but it's red, so he can start to respectfully wrap up.
Okay. I'm very sorry. Yeah. He is the only layperson who serves on the council and has been an integral partner for community events and outreach. Mr. Ken Nguyen effectively bridges the gap between different organizations, advocates for people in the community, and would be an asset to any organization he serves. It is therefore with great confidence that we strongly support a voter's approval to appoint Mr. Ken Nguyen to serve the resident of Santa Ana by representing Ward Four on the city council. Sincerely, Professor Zhou Thanh Nguyen, chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Now, um, Carl Benninger, followed by, and by the way, Carl, here your ends are better.
Okay. I was working on-
I'll show you both. You had A's, now you have N's.
Well, I keep looking for the connection with Behringer wine, but I can't find any family connection.
So the wine did it.
Yeah, it is.
Are you driving?
It was cold outside. No, I'm not driving.
You're not driving? Okay. Go ahead and then James Kendrick.
Well, thank you again, council. You have an opportunity tonight to really correct an error that happened in the, in the fall, because had that unfortunate incident not occurred, Phil would be on this, this podium right now with, with you folks on the dais. But also, more importantly, when you look at all the candidates, who has the most experience in the city? Who sat on more of the city councils? Who knows the city? Talk with Phil. I know I, I have, due to various functions in the city, and I've always been impressed how much he knows of the city. And he's also an independent voter. Those of you who thought that he'd be influenced because he had to get a little sport money, doesn't know Phil. That's why he was taken off the planning commission, because he wouldn't follow a developer's wish. You have an opportunity tonight to put Phil on this council. If you don't, and let it go to the election, and you can leave my ward and me unrepresented for another eight months, plus you'll have a lot of three-to-three votes and things will not get resolved. So for the sake of the city, the sake of people in my wards, and it is the right decision to put Phil on this council. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, James Kendrick, followed by Connie Hamilton.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Again, Phil is the right choice for this ward. No disrespect to the other people that are here tonight asking for this seat. Phil did come in second for this position, and I, I think he deserves the seat, and I, I think you really should appoint him tonight. Again, it's not, no disrespect, but these people could've stepped up and ran for this ward in the election back in November. Save the city the money. You, here you were arguing tonight over what you're gonna pay a city manager. Here, so now you wanna spend money in November to run a, a special election. Here again, save your pennies and penny, you were arguing over pennies. I understand, but I, Phil deserves a seat. I think you, you owe it to him. He did come in second place. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Hamilton, followed by Michelle Martinez.
Well, hello again. Long time no see. Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things in addition to what I said Tuesday evening. I just wanted to let you know that on the petition I had forwarded to all of you, were up to a hundred and thirty-eight signatures on the online petition plus the hard copy signatures. But all I have to say is that there's a lot of people that support Phil. Of course, as I mentioned, forty-four percent of the voters voted for Phil in the last election. And not only that, but everyone seems to like him. The Democrats, the Republicans, the Independents. I mean, he's, he just has a, a huge following, um, a lot of, a big fan base, as you would say. So he just, he's the logical choice, and I hope you guys do that. And I also, I wanted to say something that was just mentioned, um, reiterate on it. On these other candidates, I'm sure they're good candidates, but why didn't they run in November if they wanted it? It just doesn't make sense. Phil's the one that got in, rolled up his sleeves, and did all the dirty work on the election, and it just makes sense that he gets, uh, appointed to this position. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, followed by, uh, David De Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. A pleasure to be here this evening. You know, what I wanted to share, um, and regardless of the candidates that came before you, what's important is to understand the history and the context. And with this past election, I have to tell you, it was despicable, lot of dark money, dirty politics, and both candidates that ran for Ward Four took dark money or the interest groups that supported them. So those folks are both tainted. What I'm going to ask of you today is to go back out to the voters and, more importantly, have campaign finance reform and make this mayor a full-time mayor and city council. When you have outside influences continuing to share money between developers, Police Officers Association, other big interest groups, what you end up having is, those folks are running the city here today because they intimidate you, they have bullying tactics, and they put, put you all in a bad position. But if you were full-time and you had campaign finance reform, those interest groups would not have anything to do with your decisions here today. So I am urging you to go to a special election. As a San Ana High School District cannot come up to have someone, uh, as well to serve in that appointment seat, and that is the best decision for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, David De Leon, or David De Leon, followed by Alberta Christie.
Buenas tardes, or buenas noches. Thank you for this opportunity, mayor, city attorney, everybody here. I want to, uh, first, I want to say thank you, Mr. Sarmiento, for being here. Uh, your, being that your suegra, you know, condolences. We all like our, you know, it's a hard time, especially if we like our suegras, you know? It's, it's a very tough time, so thank you for taking your time out of being here. We're here in this predicament because in November twenty eighteen, you only had one legitimate candidate for Ward Four. Just one. One broke the law, and that's why he had to resign. The only legit candidate for Ward Four is sitting back there. He's, he submitted his paperwork to yet again be your city council member after what happened. Everybody here knows what happened in that election cycle. It was absolutely disgusting. But I've, I've gone to know Phil for years now, and he would be an immediate asset to this dais. I wanna thank everybody that's applied for this, uh, vacancy, but nobody else but Phil ran in twenty eighteen. Not one person that applied for this knows what it's like to run a campaign like you have. All of you have been in the crosshairs. He's seasoned, he's wounded, he's had to lick his wounds, he's had to grow up and mature as a man and as a candidate, and he would be a tremendous asset for this dais. So I, I urge you to gather those votes. He is the true representative for Four, not like another candidate that in just eighteen months is gonna be living in Ward Six because of redistricting. So let's do the right thing and let's appoint Phil Becerra. Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Alberta, followed by Tim Rush.
Mayor, council, uh, Vince, my heart goes out to you and your family and your wife. She may have been your mother-in-law, but she still was a mother to you, absolutely. And I number one, you know, uh, bits with supporting Phil. He did it the right way. We're still under the cloud of what happened in this election. We're not my sources in the DA's office. We are still going to have other things come out that is really gonna leave the cloud. Do the right thing. A legitimate candidate that ran, got the support, and even now have the support. We're going into twenty twenty when you're going into ward election. He has all the support in his ward because he's been there as a neighborhood leader when he first started out commission. I worked with him as, um, the, uh, planning commission to the Historic Resource Commission. He was a valuable asset to that commission, knowledgeable, knowledgeable about the historic factor of Santa Ana. Do his right, folks. Do what's right. Let's do something right, and let's not have this cloud still be over us by prolonging this. He deserves it, he worked for it, and he's the right pres, uh, person for that ward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tim Rush, followed by Debbie McEwen. I'm kidding, Tim. Just keep walking.
She laughed. She's in Texas.
Yeah, I talked to her this morning in Texas, so that was a quick trip. Yeah. Um, you know, tonight is a historic evening because on many levels, I think this may be the first time that Sam Romero and I ever agreed on the same thing. Um, so, Sam, I take my hat off to you. So absolutely, I, like, uh, Sam said, we need to, we need to appoint Phil. If it wasn't for the illegal campaign that was conducted by his opponent, he'd be sitting up here. We wouldn't be having all this, having this dialogue. He'd be seated up here. Twenty-six thousand voters in Santa Ana cast their ballot for Phil, forty-four percent of the voters, and that was after he, he was a victim of a vicious smear campaign with a bunch of lies spread about him, and you all know about that. Included in the fact that it was part of a negotiation between he and his opponent, that if he would let him stay in office, he would, he would get the two ladies who made these ridiculous, um, claims to not only recant them, uh, but, and, to apologize and recant them. So that proves how, how specious and utterly false they were. But also, as others have said here tonight, the, the citizens of Santa Ana deserve to have representation for the next eight or nine months and not have that seat go vacant, which it will with a special electon, election. So here, we're arguing tonight over a thousand dollars for this and three thousand dollars for that, for Christine Ridge, but we're gonna cavalierly spend four hundred thousand dollars, and even if it's half that amount, because we get to share the cost with the school district, it's still a heck of a lot of money. So I encourage you to do the right thing, appoint Phil to, to, uh, the, the position that he rightfully would've had, had it not been for an illegal campaign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. By the way, just for folks at home or, or in the audience, Debbie McEwen just texted saying she's watching this from Texas, and that she's here in spirit, and that she's for Phil. No, no, she didn't say that part. But anyways, let me bring it back to council, um, see if there are any suggestions. Uh, one thing, I know some candidates have asked, is they'd like to speak again. I don't know if we wanna hear people, give people that opportunity, if the council is so inclined. I'll let all candidates come up and, um, and, and speak again.
Not all the candidates are here, though, sir.
Those that are here.
Yeah.
Those that are here.
I just wanna make a note, since we did spring this on them at the last second, not everyone's available because of prior commitments. Just wanna make that clear.
And, and it won't be any negative reflection, but if any candidate was able to make it on, on the short-term notice, I say, you know, this is, uh, an important subject. Uh, why don't you all just line up and whatever you can, um, state your name? And yeah, like, make it short, 'cause we already had five minutes, so maybe like two minutes. So get to your point, um, and then if council members have questions, we can bring candidates back. Please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, councilwoman and councilmen. And by the way, we've been praying for you, amen, since we found out what happened, we got you in prayer. And my name is, uh, Gail Lee Oliver Jr., bishop slash pastor at the Greater Light Family Church located here in Santa Ana. Been born and raised, I've only been here, uh, for fifty-four years. I am fifty-four years old. Graduated from Montevista, Carr Intermediate and Santa Ana Valley in nineteen eighty-three. Did attend Grand Lake State University for a couple of years, have my A.A. in theology and also a degree from, uh, USC. Uh, thank God for California Endowment, who has targeted Santa Ana as one of the cities that they wanted to invest in to make it better. And so I am here to represent, uh, Santa Ana and Ward Four. I've only been there for fifty-four years as well. Moms and pops are still there as well. And, um, so I also wanna thank you, uh, mayor, amen, for making a difference in my younger brother's life. Years ago, when they were only children, you showed them some card tricks, and so that's still a memory in our family. Glory be to God. But it's time for Santa Ana, put its best, uh, feet forward, best foot forward. Amen. And so, um, I am a pastor. I think it'd be a great idea to have a pastor as one of your team players. Um, I do, I am committed, loyal. Um, I do know if I'm not going to make an impact, I wouldn't be here, but I wanna do God's will. My philosophy is, uh, people don't care how much you know till they know how much you care. And so I'm already, like I said, I'm already doing the work out in Santa Ana, so I've been able to help gang bangers be, come out of gang banging, prostitutes come off the streets. Uh, we're in elementary schools, teaching them the word of God. Janana, uh, Santa Ana jail, teaching them the word of God. I've, uh, been able to be out there with Cece out there, I call her Sessi, excuse me, Sessi out there in the city, so I know she's a team player as far as loving Santa Ana. And once again, I'm a part of love Santa Ana, and that's what we're doing. Two commandments God gave us, love the Lord our God with all our heart, uh, love the Lord our God with all of our heart, mind, soul, and strength, love our neighbors as ourself. And so that's what I'm for, loving neighbors. I don't have to be, uh, Asian or Hispanic or white to love Asians or to serve Asians, Hispanic or white. I see everybody as human beings, and I'm here to do what God wants me to do, God's will. I think my name would look great up there, by the way. God bless you.
Thank you. I, I, by the way, I don't recall whatever card tricks I showed your kids, but, um, but I'm glad they do. It's a lot of fun. Please go ahead. State your name and, and please start.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff and visitors of the council chambers. My name is Philip Ortiz, and it's a pleasure to address the council as a potential replacement for the vacant, uh, Ward Four city council seat. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, uh, this Tuesday's, uh, meeting due to work, so I, I do appreciate the opportunity to come in and present myself for your consideration. A little information about myself. I've been a resident of Santa Ana for the past thirteen years. I worked in Santa Ana for about nineteen years at a small business, manufacturing business, handling all their IT needs. Three of those years, I took a second job working at AT&amp;T, uh, traveling all around our city, installing and repairing phone and data services for, for the community. and repairing phone and data services for the community and businesses. Currently and for the past three and a half years, I've worked at Frontier Communications, doing the same type of work that I've done at AT&amp;T. Last and most important, I represent my union brothers and sisters as a union steward for the Communication Workers of America, CWA, Local ninety-five eighty-six. When it comes to Santa Ana, I just want to say, I truly love this city. When I moved here, I fell in love with this city. So much so that I'm here now to requesting to be part of the bigger picture that keeps our city moving forward. Presently, there are a lot of issues facing our city, from parking issues to the city budget, to the homeless crisis, and our understaffed police force. We, as a city, have some challenges ahead of us. These challenges are going to require our full attention. And when it comes to who's appointed to this vacant seat, we need a person with no outside distractions, someone who has a fresh perspective and a person who can listen to all sides, and only then make an educated and informed decision. I believe that I'm that person for this seat. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jennifer Oliva, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Santa Ana. I'm a product of the Santa Ana Unified School District. I went to Jefferson Elementary, MacFadden Intermediate, and I graduated from Seagull Strum High School, the inaugural class. And I love this city. I was able to give back. I worked as an assistant instructional provider for the Santa Ana Unified School District, and I worked at the high school level and at the elementary level. I have my master's degree in communication studies, where I focused on instructional communication, strategic communication, as well as gender and race studies. One of the reasons why I feel like I would be a great appointment for this council is because I have lived in Ward Four all of my life. I am twenty years old, and that's the only home I know, and attended schools from the ward. So I feel like I know what the residents of that specific area would like. I also would like to be part of the city council, just because as a young person of the city and a person of the median age of the residents of the city, I feel like I can provide perspective for what is needed. I also feel as if I can provide perspective from the lens of being a woman, the lens of being a young person, and the lens of being just a resident of the city. And I, that's all I want to share. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to Councilman Sarmiento for your loss. Thank you for being here. That's tough. So I appreciate you coming. Thank you. I'm very humbled to be here, just after having to come up here after all the folks spoke and supported me. And, you know, as we're watching tonight, there's definitely some big issues before this council. There's definitely some difference of opinions. I would like to believe that I could be someone that could really build consensus. If you don't believe me, I mean, let's go back to the tape and watch Tim Rush and Sam Romero come back up here. I mean, I was very impressed. And for all of us that have been in the city a long time, we know that's very impressive. So I'm truly humbled with that. As many of the speakers have mentioned, I can hit the ground running. It's not just my time on the planning commission, but I've worked for cities. I work with cities. So I understand the operations and how they work, and ways that we can move this city forward. I love this city. I'm not up here because I'm hoping to bounce into something bigger. I'm here because, as many of the folks that came and spoke before you said, you know, I've been out there in the community. I've been helping them, and I've never expected anything in return. Now, during my last campaign, I was very blessed to have some very big supporters. But that doesn't, in any way, shape, or form, put me in a position where I'm beholden to anybody other than the residents. And the residents that came up here, that spoke on my behalf, obviously are testifying to that fact. So I look forward to answering your questions later this evening, and I thank you again for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember. First, I would like to offer our condolences to Councilman Vince Sarmiento for your loss. Just last my father a few months ago, I feel no way you know how Eva feel right now. Again, our condolences. The city of Santa Ana was the very first place to send a man and embrace and welcome Vietnamese refugees forty-four years ago. See, Santa Ana was the very, only very, was the very first city in Orange County that accepted the settlement of Vietnamese refugees. That reason why I devote most of my time for the last forty years to giving, to giving back the community and to show how appreciative we are to the government, the city, and the people of the United States who embraced Vietnamese refugees. The only reason why I submit my application for the consideration for appointment, because I love my city. I love the city. I would, and most important, I would like to give back this city. And the most important to me is to save the city for expense of spending money on the special election. City need the money. We don't have the luxury of revenue to be able to spend on six, I believe, six to seven hundred thousand dollars for a special election. Regardless of what the outcome and how the city will do the nomination process and the appointment process, I will continue, indeed, to continue to serve the best of my ability, the city, and the residents of Santa Ana. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And with that, let me bring it back to the City Council for questions or thoughts or considerations. Who would like to go first?
Go ahead.
Ladies first?
Ladies first.
Councilor Iglesias, please.
I just want to thank everyone who spoke on behalf of a candidate and also for the candidates themselves to put yourself out here to be able to be part of the team that's going to lead the city. I do have, I know I've asked the Madam City Attorney to provide us some questions. So I don't know if that's where we're going at. I have the questions here. So I would like to know the process of doing that.
Go ahead.
To just ask the questions?
Yeah, just ask a question.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the city manager provides the questions
Okay.
to all of you and to also the candidates.
Okay, so then we could just take from this questions and...
Well, it's an option. So at this point, the city council doesn't have to do that. It's really up to the council. It's up to the council as a whole, how you want to proceed.
I would like to ask a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Ask a question.
But then, are they going to come up here? I mean, I don't know.
They come up here, and then I want to, whatever I offer you, I want to offer every other member of the city council. So if they want to ask questions, you can have a candidate come up, and you can ask an individual candidate, whatever you want to do. This is an open process.
I want to ask every candidate.
All right, then. Candidates, why don't you just, like, sit in the front row, and then you can maybe answer in the order that you spoke earlier. And, because I think she's going to go through a few questions. Please go ahead.
Okay, so my question is, what would your approach as a council member be in recommending policy, working with other council members, working with staff, and working with the community?
Ladies first. We have courage.
Thank you for your question, councilmember. So my approach would be a pedagogical approach, and that's something that I would do as an educator, where everyone in the room and everyone involved is a co-creator in creating this knowledge or creating this policy that we'd want. I'm very, I strongly believe that everybody's opinion should be taken into consideration, especially in a city council that is a nonpartisan, you know, body of government. So I really feel that coming together, making these decisions together, and really compromising and leaving your biases to the side, I really believe that that's a way of creating policy. As for engaging and interacting with staff, I strongly believe that, you know, treat others the way you want to be treated. So if you want your life to be easier, make your staff's lives easier, so that everything just works together. Thank you.
Are we going to put a time limit?
Yeah, let's, one minute or less, please. Just keep the answers, only answer her question. And if you're brief, councilmembers will like you better.
I will work very closely with all the members of the council and with the staff for the benefit of the resident.
Boy, that was not even a green light, Ken. Wow.
He took you seriously. My experience with policy is something that I believe that bringing to the council would be important. But we have a great professional staff, and I think it's important to work with them. And especially, I know that each council member has that benefit of meeting with staff and really discussing a lot of the, you know, the nitty-gritty details. And I think it's important to utilize our staff. And when I served on the planning commission, there was definitely a lot of opportunities that even though my professional background's in planning, it was great to work with staff and be able to come up with solutions that worked and that we were able to work on the planning commission to get seven oh votes in consensus with policy ideas, issues with projects where we had to mitigate certain impacts. So I believe that not only do I have that experience, but at the same time, I think that we have a great staff to work with, and I feel that I already have that experience of working with them and being able to do that. Thank you.
All right. I already love staff. I love people. I'm a people person, so that's out of the way. And then also, when it comes to different policies and things of that sort, I would definitely, first of all, look unto God for wisdom inside, understanding and knowledge, and do a whole lot of studying. And I learned a long time ago in year two thousand to, you can disagree, but make sure you respectfully disagree. Walk in love and walk out of love. God bless you.
So I approach everything with an open mind. I listen to everybody's perspective and make my decisions based on both how I feel and what the knowledge of people, what the knowledge is that people have. So always listen to the professionals. That's my take. But always approach with an open mind, always. Thank you.
I believe that's all, I believe that's all the candidates. You want to ask your next question? He answered already. He was so fast, the city clerk missed him. No, he did. He came up before you did the green light. He was already sitting down.
Are we going to go around or...
Well, what I maybe like to suggest, if other people have questions, let's take turns, and then if you don't, that's okay. We'll go. So let's go to Councilman Vince Sarmiento, please.
You know, I'm not prepared to ask questions yet. I'll go ahead and defer. The only question I had for the city attorney was, I think I was the last person appointed to the city council in two thousand and seven. I think it even preceded your time. But I remember the mayor, and the mayor was probably the only one here. There was a process that was set up for everybody to submit something in writing, which everybody did. And then we interviewed each, each of the candidates, and I think there were seven or eight candidates. And we wanted to ask them the same questions, and we wanted to give them the benefit of confidentiality and, you know, privacy, and have the others set aside. So did we agree on anything on Tuesday night on process? And maybe can you go through that? Because this appears kind of random, and that's fine. But, you know, is that what we agreed to have an arbitrary, random process?
Well, yeah, you kind of agreed not to have a set process. The council directed the city manager to prepare a set of questions, which they did, and to distribute the questions at four thirty this afternoon to council members and the candidates. So no one had any, you know, upper hand. Everyone had the questions at the same time. And then the idea was that you would arrive here today and decide how you wanted to proceed, whether you wanted to ask only one of those questions to all the candidates, whether you wanted to have an open forum, like it sounds like you're having now. It was left up to you.
Okay, because there could be other questions about weighted voting. You know, you have a first selection, a second selection. I mean, was that discussed at all?
No, although the city clerk's office did make reference to the process that was used during your appointment, and that information was provided. But this was the process that they asked after.
That's fine. And I mean, the only caveat I would say is, I think, the same thing that councilmember, Mayor Protem Villegas mentioned. You know, because this was the straddle two meetings, you know, there is a disadvantage to the person who isn't here. So that's my only bit of information. So I'll go ahead and...
All right, folks that want to ask questions, Councilor Solario or Peñalosa. Councilor Peñalosa, please.
One of the questions, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Candidates, thank you for your time and for coming out here and for your dedication to wanting to serve our city. Well, the question I wanted to ask is, is list three goals you would like to achieve during your appointed term. And I don't know, Mr. Nguyen, sorry, I was the first person I saw.
No problem. I always prepare. Thank you. The three goals we'd like to achieve was the fiscal discipline, accountability, continued economic development, and public safety. That's my three goal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Peñalosa, for that question. My top three, I mean, there's plenty of things I'd like to accomplish. But the top three I would like to accomplish in my appointed term would be hire more police officers. We desperately need to increase the number of police officers that the city has. Would like to really pour into the budget and really try to structurally figure out how we can get on more stable footing, because right now we have a lot of big budget questions that we really need to stabilize. And third is the general plan update. You know, this council embarked on it. It's kind of petered out a little bit. And I think that for some of the controversial developments that we have in town, and to really make Santa Ana more attractive for quality development, not just out-of-context development, I think it's important that we have a blueprint that the city can follow, that the council can follow, and that the community and leadership have all bought into and have agreed that that's the path forward. Thank you.
One of the things I'll agree with Phil is increasing the police force here. That's a major thing. Also, to reduce the burden that this homeless population that we have, this homeless crisis that we have on hand, that's affecting our city. It's greatly affecting our city. Fiscal responsibility also. That's, that would be the last thing. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. My three goals would be improvement of our city infrastructure, economic development, and beautification and preservation of our city.
Was that purification? Okay. I was like, purification? That's...
Good thing you clarified that.
All right, to be appointed, to be able to be a part of the team, to help make Santa Ana a safe place to walk the streets. We have a lot of different areas that we have to be concerned about. We have to make sure that we identify the problems and come up with the solutions that's going to make Santa Ana a safer place, pour into the youth, and make sure that Santa Ana's a place where we're safe and we love our youth, and make sure that we make education vitally important, important to this generation. God bless you. Remember, people don't care how much you know till you, they know how much you care.
Thank you, sir. Okay, maybe now I go to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I received a number of text messages and emails to support and appoint Phil Becerra. You know, I walked for three days for Phil during the campaign, passing out flyers for multiple candidates. In there, he was included. I was, I remember being out there in the heat. I remember the man was getting hit left and right with a lot of dark money. To this day, we still don't know exactly where that dark money came from. I don't want to make any decisions until I know exactly where it came from. I know they're still looking into it. But in all transparency, that's what happened. And, you know, it did affect some people. And I'm looking at the numbers right here. I know a gentleman earlier said there was twenty-six thousand people that voted for him. It's actually twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen. That's forty-four percent. Then there was the other people who voted for Mr. Reyna, and that was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. So if we were to appoint someone tonight, if we were to appoint Phil, and I believe he's qualified, but what about the other thirty thousand people who voted? You know, this whole dark money thing wasn't cleared up till after. So it kind of needs to be cleared up a little bit. And, you know, in my way of thinking, if you want something, you go out and get it. I had to go through it. I know he went out there and was in the campaign, out there walking every day. And believe me, it's tough, because people ask you questions, people mock you, people say things to you, you get chased by dogs, I mean, all kinds of things when you're out there knocking on doors, because that's the way you do it. You got to get out there and knock on doors. You got to walk. I remember I lost like thirteen pounds without even trying, out there walking. And I walked seven days a week, even in the rain. So my question of the candidates are, you don't have to answer them, but my question is this, if we go to a special election, are you willing to run? That's where it's at. That's where you earn it. That's where you earn it, because I don't believe in handing it out. I'm sorry. That's my thinking. I believe it's got to be fair for all the voters. So if you want it bad enough, you'll get out there, you'll register, and you run. And I know this man has been through it. I know people that have been at the police academy a few times, two or three times. I know people have been in SEAL team training two or three times, going through hell and buds and all that. Hey, if you want it bad enough, you'll go out there and you'll do the work. You'll do whatever it takes. You'll fill out the paperwork, you know, because a lot of people do this. No offense, a lot of people do this on a lot of things. Oh, I could have written that book, or I could have done this kind of work, or if I was on that council. You know what? You have no idea. You got to go out there and earn it, and then when you're up here, it's tough, even then. So I support a special election. No offense to anyone, but that's my thinking. And, you know, that's just the way I look at this.
Do you want him to answer your question, or does it make a difference?
Well, if somebody wants to come up and say, "I'll run," then let's hear it.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas, I will be running.
Thank you.
I'm here to do God's will. If you want me to run, I'm running. I've already been door knocking, and I tell people about the love of God. Amen.
Thank you. By the way, thank you for the prayers for the city of Santa Ana. Appreciate it.
Mr. Viegas, I will run as well. Thank you.
You would run?
Yes.
I will run, but different ward.
A different ward. But thank you, Ken, and my condolences to your family.
Thank you for your question. If it did come to a special election, I would run.
Thank you very much. And that's what I wanted to hear, because you have to want it. You really do. And Madam City Attorney, a quick question for you. So if someone, let's say somebody did get appointed, it's just not my choice, but if someone were to be appointed, do they have to run again in 2020?
Yeah, so the charter provides that if you make an appointment tonight, the appointee only serves until the next general municipal election, which will be in November of 2020.
So they have to run, you have to do this twice, then? They would have to... And if we don't, we go to a special election, you'll run in November, and then you'll have to run again, right?
You would run, but you, if there's a special election, you would carry out the rest, the balance of the term?
Balance of the term.
So if you have, if you appoint, you have to run in 2020. Anyone who is elected through a special election, or who was elected in 2020, will serve until 2022.
Thank you very much. So I think about these 30,000 people that were, I think, were, you know, misled. They were misled with all the dark money and the, you know, awful campaign. It's terrible. That smear stuff is just awful, and I can't wait. I hope the authorities really do something on that, so... And that is my only question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, let me go to the right, Councilman Vince Armento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, so I think, you know, there's, I have more questions than, more questions of the process and maybe questions of the candidate, but, or of the candidates, but let's just start with those as you're answering some of these. So I'm going to go off script, because these are suggested questions. I don't think there's anything that binds us to them. This is a fairly informal process, and so, you know, there are some issues that have faced our city for the past few years, five years, 10 years, and actions that were taken by previous councils that are issues that are going to be facing us again. So I'd like to get your thoughts on some of those. And the issues I'm talking about are, number one, district elections, which the city is going to be moving to in 2020. We're going from an at-large voting system, election system, to a district election system. And that's one issue. The second one is, this city took, made the decision to become a sanctuary city a few years back. I want to have your opinion on that and whether or not that's something that we should continue. And number three, the city's been, has faced questions of gentrification, not only in our downtown, but throughout the city. And I want to get your thoughts and your opinions on what you think of those three issues.
Go ahead, John. I'll jump at once.
First off, Councilman Armento, in regards to the district elections, your question is whether we supported it, or what is your question?
What's your opinion of Santa Ana moving from at-large, from an at-large election system to a district election system?
I think for the longest time, we were kind of, you know, one foot in the water, one foot out of the water. We had a ward, but we didn't run by ward, it was a from-ward system. I think there's pros and cons to going to a by-ward system. Having said that, I think it will work in Santa Ana. I think it'll, just like anything we've done here, it'll work. I had some initial reservations, not going to lie, because I think physically, as a city, we aren't large enough to where I think certain members may be prone to look out for the interests of their constituency at the behest of the others. But having said that, I think that, because also too, with Santa Ana not being a large city, it's hard to make decisions that are singularly to your ward. Your second question was regards to sanctuary cities. I think that with California already being a sanctuary state, it's really a moot point for the city of Santa Ana. And then in regards to gentrification, I'll say that, you know, my uncle opened a Pops Cafe in the early 90s, and he was here along with the same clientele that was here back then. And as the downtown has evolved over time, I think for a capital city, we need to be inclusive. And I think that it's important, you know, I love seeing when new restaurants come in, and they're Asian, they're Filipino, I mean, there are all kinds of stuff that's coming in, and that's what a capital city should be. It should be about addition, not about singling out and trying to maintain some sort of status quo. I think all good cities, all big worldly cities, they evolve, and they're very about, very much about addition, not subtraction. Thank you.
So just real quickly, I didn't understand your second response to the question on sanctuary city policy. I get that the state, that's the state policy.
Correct.
I'm asking you what your position is on that.
My position is, the state's already decided that question. I'm asking to be a city council member. I'm not here to discuss federal policy.
That's a state policy, though.
But I'm saying that as far as immigration, immigration's a federal policy. I'm here to talk about city policy. I'm running for city council, not Congress. If I really want to talk about immigration, I'll consult with Congressman Lou Correa.
Right, but each city can dictate whether or not they want to be recognized as a sanctuary city or not.
And correct. And as I've stated, the city of Santa Ana is a city, not a federal jurisdiction. We're not DFA. We are a city.
I don't think you're answering, or you understand the question, but in any event, I want to be respectful to other people's time.
Thank you.
I am personally support the election by ward, because majority of the residents in Santa Ana are Latino, and very difficult for non-Latino able to participate and then get involved in the city council. And also, there will be less money for the candidate to have to campaign, and also to truly, truly, for the council member represent particular ward, we're truly responsible and representing that constituency in that ward and the city council. The second question, the essential sheet, I totally support the sanctuary city policy the city had made last year, because the sea of Santa Ana is a melting pot, a very different, various different culture and different nationality. And we need to able to protect our resident who are victim of these, of the brutality and then also various, you know, attack for various federal government. Again, I am supportive of it. Thank you.
There was one more question on gentrification.
I'm sorry, what the third question is?
On gentrification.
I have no opinion on that, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. As for, oh my God, what was the first?
District elections.
District elections. I believe that that would be a lot easier for candidates who are running, and also it would make it easier for the residents, because they know who to look for, because a lot of residents in the city don't know what ward they live in, they don't know who their representative is. So I think it would provide that aspect of education for our residents. As for sanctuary cities, our, we have a hushed population of immigrants here, so I strongly believe that we should be a sanctuary city. And as for gentrification, the economic development, economic development side of it is the positive of it, but there's also that displacement. So there's, there needs to be some sort of balance by how many new developments are coming in, but how are they helping our residents as well?
Thank you.
Okay. Sanctuary, becoming our, being a sanctuary city. When I was in Washington DC, the congressman, some of the congressman and the assembly people were sharing with us that it's a possibility that the feds will take away money if you're a sanctuary city. So if it's, if it's going to help Santa Ana reach its goal, that's one thing. If it's going to hurt Santa Ana, then that's another thing. So with that, I'd have to do more homework on that, on that topic, and then...
District elections.
District elections. Phew, that's a good one. I'd have to meditate on that one a little bit more, too.
And it's okay to say you don't know. I mean, you don't have to give a response.
Yeah, I haven't really had much time to really think about that. But, and the gentrification, what is your exact question as far as gentrification is concerned?
So there's been an ongoing debate about, again, new business come, new businesses coming in and sort of displacing existing businesses. So there's, it's not just a discussion in Santa Ana, it's a discussion in most large cities where you have family-owned businesses that have been here for decades, and they get displaced by new businesses that come in. Rents get raised, and folks get displaced after years and years of investment. So it, again, it's a discussion of the evolution of a community, families and small businesses that get displaced.
Okay, I would definitely have to meditate on that one, too, but I would also say...
Lot of meditation.
Yeah, yeah. And I would also have to say, we can't control everything, you know, so... But what's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong.
Thank you, sir. And again, there isn't a right answer to any of these. These are just questions that we grapple with here at the council, so I want to make sure.
And these are excellent questions to meditate on.
Thank you, Mr. Armento. Regarding district elections, I think it's important to have a local, like a local contact for that district. If we open it up to like an at-large, at-large election, we're going to have people going, looking for their representative, trying to figure out who it is, traveling across town. I think it's better to have somebody like a local contact. Same, similar, it's a similar structure, you know, being a union steward, and we, you know, we have our board members, or we have our local contact at the, at our job site. So, you know, we have people that can reach out to us, and then we can reach out and move things, advance, you know, any issues that may occur. Regarding a sanctuary city, this is a really hot topic. You know, we have to protect the most vulnerable people. And a lot of the people that come here illegally are coming here to work. They're coming here to work to provide for their families, and it's important that we protect them. You know, we can't just, you know, fold, you know, when the government comes and says, "Oh, we're going to take away your money because, you know, you're helping, helping these people out that actually need help." You know, there's good and bad on both sides of the issue, but I believe we need to protect the most vulnerable people. Regarding gentrification, there's, development is good, for the most part. You know, we make our city look a lot nicer. But I think we need to also help the businesses and the families that are in these areas, you know, that have been in these areas, that have lived in these areas for many years, stay in these areas. So I think we need to kind of watch and monitor the, you know, businesses and what developers come into the area, you know, to be more cautious and, like I said, protect the people that have been there for all this time, so...
Thank you. Thank you all.
That was it. Councilor Solario?
Yes, we received some good questions, and I appreciated the second round of input from the candidates. And I do also want to give, you know, special recognition to Maricela Vallejo. Even though she's not here, she did review the questions and submitted us, submitted the answers back to the council, so I think that's very admirable and shows due diligence. My view is that the, you know, they all have strong points, all the candidates. I do think that our current commissioners, which are Mari Vallejo and Ken Nguyen and Jennifer Olivia, all bring something, would bring something different to the council. In particular, you know, Jennifer and Ken, I'm very impressed with and would love to serve you, to serve with you. I know Ken has the additional complexity that where he lives, given there's, you know, a lot of, you know, Asian-Americans in his part of town in 2020, that's also when not only might there be an election for this position, but also the new ward one that Commissioner Nguyen lives in would be up then, which is why, you know, it's a little bit of a complexity for him and for me, because I'd love to join, join you up here, but that is a complexity. Either of those three, I think, would be strong candidates, particularly those latter two that I mentioned. I'm hopeful that we can, you know, all agree on somebody, and if not, we should just, you know, take it to the ballot, just because, you know, there is something to be said about, you know, it's the public's vote, and they should, you know, they should have a right to have a say in this, especially if the council, especially since the council is so divided. You know, if there were, you know, strong consensus around one candidate, I think, you know, that would be kind of a stamp of approval that, you know, that candidate is solid, but when there's so much variety and opinion up here from the dais, I just don't see it. So I am leaning just for supporting a special election and would be prepared to make that motion or second tonight.
All right, more questions? Councilor David Peñalosa?
Yeah, I have some comments, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, again, to thank the candidates for applying, and, you know, specifically Phil Becerra, I know that, I mean, he's the only one, like the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, he's the only one that ran and ran a good campaign and, you know, was a second vote getter. And, but I just, I don't, I have just some questions with them, because I'm so, with what happened with the council member that resigned, I'm paranoid with all this residency stuff. And I want to make sure that those things are, I'm not sure if we're going to make a vote for an applicant tonight or not, but Madam City Clerk and City Attorney, I had just a couple of questions, because I have, I downloaded the roster for the current members and boards of commissions off our website early last week, and I noticed that Ms. Vallejo and Mr. Nguyen both, there's two columns on these residency sheets, and under representing ward, they both represented ward, I think, I believe, Ms. Vallejo represented Ward 6, but it says that her residence was in Ward 6. And Mr. Nguyen shows as representing for the Planning Commission, Ward, where is it? Ward 4, but his residence is in Ward 6. When I brought these, this question up to our staff, they said that they'd look into it and get me an answer of why the residence was showing Ward 6. Then when I went today to look at the same roster, it was changed from Ward 6 to Ward 4. So I don't know what kind of residency, I don't know if it was an error on our city clerk's side of inputting data into their boards and commission application, but according to the roster that I printed last week, it said Ward 6 as their residence. Can you explain that, Miss, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Peñalosa. So before the January 12, 2017 adoption of the map, Mr. Kenneth Nguyen resided in Ward 6. The only application on file that we have was as of 2005. After the adoption of the 2017 ward map, he now resides in Ward 4. Beginning with the term starting after 2006 general election, at least 50% of those persons nominated from time to time should be the ward representative. At the request of council member, this rule may be waived by a two-thirds vote, and the resident can represent a different ward that he does not reside in. And that's based on the Charter Section 901.
Right. That's not what I was asking. So... Right. That, that's not what I was asking. So, uh, if you want to see, here the personnel board, uh, Ms. Vallejo shows representing Ward Six, but her residence is in Ward Four. I mean, Ward Six. And for the Planning Commission, uh, it shows that Mr. Nguyen is printed... Give me a second here. Here it is. Uh, Mr. Nguyen, it says representing Ward Three, but his residence is in Ward Six. When I, this was printed early last week. When I went on today on the city's website, it was changed to residence Ward Four. So, but, and this was, according to their applications, they lived in Ward Four for 30-plus years. So why does it show as a residence Ward Six?
So it looks like that's a clerical error, error, excuse me. When it was updated, when he was nominated to the, um, the current boards and commission, it looks like the, the residency ward was not updated from Ward Six to Ward Four. And when it was brought to our attention, it looks like it was corrected by staff.
You know, I, I would add, I think, to some of the history here is about who the council nominator is. So for example, Commissioner Nguyen used to be Vince's, uh, commissioner, uh, and when I was elected to the council more recently, I nominated him to be appointed by the council. And so he's a Ward Three, uh, appointee, but he happens to live in, uh, the ward, the ward that we're discussing. So I think that's, that, that's what the relationship be...
There's two columns, representing Ward Three, and residence, and it says Ward Six.
And I think the Ward Six is just when they changed the, the map. He used to be in that, in that ward. And Mr. Nguyen's been a commissioner for, for, uh, a number of years. So when he initially was there, as I think the clerk's office mentioned...
Yeah, I wanted to make reference to something.
He used to be in the prior council, I mean, the prior ward, and then when they redrew the lines, he was, uh, the lines were adjusted so that he then lived in Ward Four.
Yeah, my understanding, I had a conversation with the clerk's office on a different matter, but it might shed some light on this. My understanding is that when someone submits an application to serve on a commission, those applications are not necessarily renewed, as, as we spoke, you may recall. Apparently, there was an application, uh, more recently identified, where when they filled out the application, believe it or not, they were in Ward Six. They were, that application was never updated. Um, I did speak with the clerk's office about how we should not be doing that. And if we have people who are going to be appointed by the council, we should be requiring them to complete a new application and not just rely on the information that was submitted 10 or 12 years ago.
So before the, the, the current ward boundaries were adopted, right? I'm assuming?
Yes. Can you make reference to that? We just spoke about that the other day.
Yes, that is correct. So the prior, prior practice was to use the application on hand if the address was still the same. As of January 12, 2017, Mr. Nguyen's address resided in Ward, um, Ward Four. Prior to that, prior to January 17, 2017, it was in Ward Four. Unfortunately, what happened is that our staff inadvertently, uh, did not update the ward from, um, address to correctly reflect Ward Four rather than Ward Six, which is why you now have the updated information.
Right, okay. So, and, so it was a cleriker, clerical error on behalf of the clerk's office?
Correct, that is a true statement.
Okay. And that, those were the, the concerns I had, uh, looking at, at the two applicants, just, I mean, they're qualified, they're, they're, but I just, with this whole residency issue, I didn't want any, you know, it was, it was questionable that, once I brought it up, it was changed to Ward Four. Uh, so I wasn't, I just wanted to make sure that that was, um, wasn't done with any other intentions besides accurate information.
Correct. We were just updating it to reflect correctly to Ward Four.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, additional comment or thought? Uh, Councilmember Celia Iglesias?
So my, I guess my concern is, uh, we're having questions of the candidates who are here, yet we're missing one. And, um, so if we were to take a vote today, it would really not be fair if we were to appoint somebody now because she didn't have the opportunity to be here because we called it, you know, she already had prior commitments. So my question would be for the mayor and also for our, um, city attorney, is, uh, it seems like we don't have a, a set process. And I concur with what you said, um, Mayor Protem, about, you know, having an opportunity for the, you know, almost 30,000 voters, for them to have an opportunity to select that person. Because there's a lot of issues that are being talked about, and some may be true, some may not be true, and I don't want it to fall back personally on me, saying that you've selected someone that you really didn't vet. Because we're talking about vetting, remember? We're talking with the city attorney to the same things, like the, the thing that you weed in vet. And I just, for me is, um, and then when we talk about dark money, we talk about, you know, special interests, you know, on my part, I'm gonna say this bluntly, there's no sympathy. Because there was about over $100,000 that the Police Association spent against my candidacy when I ran for this seat. So I just, you know, there's dark money everywhere, and I just feel that, you know, it would be back to the voters would be the best thing for us to do, because they're the ones that are going to be saying, okay, yeah, you know what, and if we choose someone, you know, it's on them. They chose that person to be on this dais. So with me, I would concur with what you've mentioned. I, I feel since we don't have everyone here to be present, the best thing would be to take it back to the voters.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, Councilor, yes, David Peñalosa?
The idea of not having everyone here present, i- it's not valid. This was sprung on me, too. I had dinner plans today and, and, and I'm here. So if you really wanted, you would be here. And regardless of what, you know, plans you had or what prior commitments you had, uh, so that, I don't think that's a, that's a valid, uh, statement. And with the cost of a special election, it's not really the cost that, that concerns me, it's the fact that we're gonna be six, seven months, eight months without a council member. And that, that is, I think, the, the, something that we should consider. Um, not, not so much, if this special election was a month from now, I'd be all in. But do we really want to just drag this out for eight months without having a, a needed person up there?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, well, I don't know if he's done. Let's see if he's done. Let's make sure he's done first.
And, I mean, those are the only comments that, that I wanted to, the, um...
And they're very, very good comments. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I, I totally agree. We could use, David, you know, we could use another, another vote up here. And I, and I agree. But I think that the, um, interest of the public to have a say, just like we're all asked, you know, uh, you know, how many people voted on the 2525 main thing, and so many people were very happy that we listened to the public. Well, I'm hearing a lot of, um, a lot from the public right now saying, hey, you should take it to the voters, because it's a big decision. The voters should have a say. There's 30,000 people here who were cheated out of something. And, um, you know, they, they should have a say. And I think the, we should listen to that. In my personal opinion, you know, I respect you very much. Um, yeah, we, you know, but, uh, you know, it's really, really difficult to have a council where you got three, you know, you got six people, you can, you know, everything dies at three-three. Um, but I think that the voice of the people need to be heard. And that is my, my, um, my take on it.
Uh, Councilman Vince Sarmiento?
Thank you. And the only thing I would remind everybody is that even though you're appointed, you're still gonna go, have to go out and have to have people vote for you very quickly. 2020 is right around the corner. And I know when I was appointed, it was a matter of months before you start realizing you have to, you're, you're, you're in an election. So whoever does prevail, if in fact we do appoint, you're gonna be subject to that same vetting and hard work and raising money and speaking to, um, you know, people in the city. Uh, so, you know, that doesn't go away. Just because you're appointed doesn't mean you're appointed for your entire three terms. You have to go, uh, almost immediately back to the voters. And to me, if we were to spend all 400 or 500,000, whatever that cost estimate is for a special election unilaterally and not join the, the, um, school district special election, we would get somebody very soon, but at a very high cost. If we wait, we're talking about November, almost the end of the year, almost going the entire year without somebody. And I think, as somebody said, we're a pretty fractious council. We tend not to be able to agree on much, so we could stagnate. And that's where I think, um, where we don't want to be. That's why I think we rushed through a decision to, to, to make an appointment, or what, that was one of the compelling reasons to appoint a city manager, because we didn't want to wait and things were, were dormant up, uh, on the eighth floor. Well, this council could completely freeze and paralyze. So, you know, I think that there is a compelling reason to appoint somebody, um, just as compelling as to waiting and letting the voters, uh, have an opinion. The voters will have an opinion on that appointment, uh, very soon, if we do make one.
Your additional thoughts? Councilman Jose Solario?
Okay.
Well, I believe that we should just be, um, doing our best to make sure we get along and step it up a little bit and make this, uh, good, sound decisions instead of, uh, you know, personal interests or anything. Let's just get along. It's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt us. And we will split the costs with the school district.
Well, like, I think maybe we gotta get to the bottom line, and I don't know if people are comfortable or not, but maybe we could state if, if we're supportive of anybody, who that is. If there's four votes for anybody, we have something, not we go home. And if we go home, there's a special election. Um, I, I don't mind starting off, and I'll tell you, the, the person that would be my preference, I'll say this publicly, would be Phil Becerra. I don't know that there's any other votes for that, there may not be. And I know I've spoken to folks and, and, and we all have different opinions. So if they're non, you know, we go from there. Councilor Solario?
Mr. Mayor, the, the staff was kind enough to, uh, put together some additional process steps. And by the way, we at the last meeting didn't go into too much detail because Councilmember Sarmiento was there and Mr. Mayor, you weren't there. So we at least got enough on the agenda so that we can have this conversation, but didn't want to, uh, get too in-depth other than ask staff to please consider doing so. So they suggest, uh, uh, that each council member identify two candidates, so that, you know, we each kind of have two votes, and then we see who the top two might be. And maybe we then interview those two or do a second round of voting at that point. Uh, that's a little bit related to what you said. Uh, so I, you know, that the candidates spent, you know, spent some time putting applications together and, and being here. And I think we kind of also owe it to them as well.
Again, it's up to the council. Are council members willing to do?
No.
Two votes or not?
No, no.
I'd be...
So we got, we got, uh, folks that are not. I, again, I, I would go a single vote for Phil, so if it's not Phil, I go, you know, towards the special. That's, that's why.
Yeah, and I would, you know, cast my votes for, uh, Commissioner Jennifer Oliva and Commissioner Ken Nguyen.
Okay.
Oh, we're appointing two?
Well, he, I, I did one, he did two. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Correct. We had agreed to a process, we're just voicing...
And you can say no, and it's your turn.
There is no process, that's from what I understand.
Go ahead.
You're making it up, but you go along. But are you pulling, are you pulling the council members right now to see if they have to or no?
I, I am, but I'm saying that I myself do, am not willing to do two. And if others aren't, then, you know, we won't have four and then we go home. Councilor David Peñalosa?
Um, my, my top two would have to be, it's top two, right?
Only if you wanted to.
If you want to, you don't have to.
It'd be, uh, Phil Becerra and, and Commissioner, Commissioner Jennifer Oliva.
Okay. Councilor Iglesias?
Believe it or not, I only have one. And what I've always wanted, according to my last name's Iglesias, so I really, um, would go for Pastor Gail Oliver.
His last name is Iglesias?
Nope, it's churches.
You're close, it's churches. She doesn't do card tricks, though.
It's church-related, yeah.
It's church-related. Uh, I already stated mine, council member?
Special election.
So no vote, no, no candidate at all. Councilman Vince Sarmiento?
Yeah, I, I'm real disappointed with this process, uh, or lack of a process. It's really unfortunate. It's unfair to those people that spent the time filling out this application, coming here on Tuesday, coming here on, on, on a Friday night, and with that expectation of us making a decision. It's just, um, I just think we weren't real deliberate, we weren't real fair. This is not the way we should be conducting, um, an appointment this serious. But, you know, given that I've heard everybody and I think that everybody, um, comes with good intentions, I, um, you know, I would say I could support, uh, uh, both commissioners, uh, Commissioner Wen and Commissioner Ochoa. Or Oliva, I'm sorry, Oliva.
All right. So Madam Clerk, you kind of heard all that. I, I don't count four for anybody. Is that your tally?
That is correct. I have three for Olivia, Oliva, Oliva, and two for Becerra, and two for Nguyen, but no four.
Does anybody wish to reconsider?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, call a special election and for direct staff to, uh, coordinate with the school district to see...
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Can, can I ask for a question just on the special election? If for any reason one of us up here wanted to, to put something else on the ballot, um, aside from, from a Ward Four vacancy for a special election, is that possible? Is there an extra cost? Is it the same?
Um, it may not be substantially more. It could be 10 to 20,000, depending on what you're gonna do with the ballot. We'd have to verify that with the county. Uh, yes, you could put additional items on. The only restrictions might be the type of things you're trying to do. For example, a charter amendment can only go at a, I think they call it a state election, um, which would be November. Um, and you would have to do that at least 90 days before the election. So your deadline to do that would be early August.
Not this November, but the, the next?
If you're having a special election, it's gonna be November of this year, November of 2019.
Okay. But that's considered a state election, as I was just...
Um, I don't recall if it actually meets the definition. I do not believe it does.
Okay.
But I will verify that. Uh, that was, that's a good question. Um, and we'll verify. But yes, you can, you can place other measures on that ballot.
And you would need four votes to do that?
You would need four votes to do that. You could not place tax measures on that ballot, as that would require a unanimous vote of the council. A general tax, you could not place on that ballot.
And, and, uh, just, I mean, just so, so, uh, people understand what I had in mind is, is had to do with the residency, because I think the current residency in the charter is silly. 30 days for a election and one year for appointment, it should be minimum one year for, for anything. Because we see at every election, you have multiple candidates just revolving around, kind of playing music with chairs with the ward, and it's embarrassing for our city. And, and that's something that I'd like to...
I would support you on that.
Eventually consider.
I would support you on that.
We will research whether a charter amendment can be placed on November 2019 if you do call a special election.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Democracy in action, and now we get to go home.